Good evening and welcome to the Milton Planning Board's first meeting of fiscal year 2017. I'm Brian Burse, Chair of the Planning Board, and I'll ask my colleague to introduce themselves, starting on my right.
I'm Alex Whiteside, a member of the Board.
Tim Czerwinski, Assistant Town Planner.
Aprili Anderson Lamorel, a member of the Board.
Cheryl Tagayas, a member of the Board.
And Mike Kelly is on vacation and unable to attend this evening. All right, we have a very busy agenda tonight, so we're going to get right to business. A bunch of things not thrown in on my agenda, or something maybe there on the other one.
Here are my suggestions for changes to the minutes.
Excellent.
Brian, you have a fresh agenda at the top of the new packet that I gave you.
Do you have June 9th in that package of minutes, Brian?
The one right in front of me?
Yeah.
Yes?
The last one that I saw did not have that I arrived at 7:10. It has me as not attending on June 9th.
Really? Well.
Well.
Yep, you are correct.
For the record.
All right. Do you mind if I mark up yours?
Right, that's why I distributed it, so everyone can do a little markup.
Thank you for your email clarification.
All right.
You're right.
It may have been 7:12 rather than 7:10.
I'm going to circulate these around. If there are no additional comments, I'm going to suggest that we move those minutes to be approved. But I'll give everyone a quick minute to look at those. Our next meeting dates are July 28th, August 11th, and August 25th. We are going to approve those minutes as soon as we get done reviewing them. I believe we have another set of minutes in our packet, don't we?
This should be from the most recent meeting, was it June 23rd?
Yes, so the June 23rd meeting is in your packet. We'll review those at the next hearing. If everyone could take a look at them before that. All right, before we go on to the regular agenda, we're going to offer citizens an opportunity to speak. If there is something that is not on the agenda this evening that you would like to speak to, you may rise now and do so. We are covering, for the record, Kinsale Lane, Thayer Nursery, Beechwood Lane, 683 Brushhill Road, and Novara at 565 Adams Street. So anybody that would like to speak on anything other than those items?
That's okay. Thank you very much. Thanks. I know you have a busy day, but I'll try to be concise. My name is Joe Sloan, 55 Concord Avenue. Earlier, I submitted in a letter to Tim to be circulated to the Board with some updates and some observations on the various presentations on the 487 Blue Hills Parkway project to selectmen earlier this week and to residents at the Milton Library. I just wanted to take a few minutes and just focus on one aspect of that, and especially some discussions at the library. Most importantly, the revised proposal, you may or may not know, now includes the construction of a full-fledged intersection on Blue Hills Parkway in front of this property. A signalized intersection with stacking lanes is the way it's been described to the selectmen and both to residents at the library, not just to afford safe crossing for pedestrians at that spot, but to enable left turns in and out of the property where currently that option doesn't exist. We've spoken before about the historic status of the property, the importance of the property to the town, the fact that DCR Parkway preservation guidelines exist. With all of these considerations, there's a great amount of concern that I have, and I know that others have shared with the Board of Selectmen and I think with this Board, about that proposition of changing the Parkway, taking away a portion of the median to create this intersection. A question came up at the library about the importance of this intersection as it related to how a commercial development proposal might proceed, and what Mr. Corcoran's answer to that question was, was that the intersection was essentially essential to his proposal as it stood today. So considering the importance of the Parkway, the importance of this issue, what I have asked the selectmen to do, and I have asked this Board to consider, is initiating a public dialogue with the DCR. We have some indications from Mr. Corcoran that his initial conversations with the DCR have brought the discussion to a certain point, but I believe it's fair to say that the selectmen agreed that a more public discussion with the DCR would be very helpful at this point, given the importance that has been expressed of the intersection as it would relate to the possibility of a development at that site. And I think it would give the opportunity for a lot of the different users and abutters to the Parkway to weigh in about, not just the intersection, but just how the Parkway's used, how people appreciate it, what their concerns, all existing concerns about the Parkway are. You know, Parkway Methodist Church is there and takes real pride in their position on the Parkway. It would be good to hear from site council folks from Tucker School and Milton High School about their perceptions of the Parkway. Home Inc. is there. I mean, there are residents that live along the Parkway, so I just kind of put that forward as an idea that might facilitate this discussion and help bring things forward with a clear understanding of where the DCR would be at this point. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Corcoran, you are recognized.
Thank you. Ned Corcoran, 70 Morton Road. I'm speaking now at Public, at Citizens Speak, because the ICE House project proposal is not on the agenda, but I feel I need to at least speak and alert the public to a couple of things that are happening. One is that on Monday, July 25, a week from this coming Monday, there will be a second or a next neighbor meeting, broader meeting, at the library, 6:30 in the evening. Milton Cable has offered to televise it. We've accepted their offer. We think that will bring transparency to the process of those discussions, and so we look forward to that. Second, we understand that, given the selectmen's decision not to host a special town meeting in October, that the likely next opportunity for special town meeting would be January, and that would give this Board eight meetings, including tonight, obviously not on tonight, but seven more meetings, before they want would close presumably the first week of November for a January special town meeting. And we look forward to engaging in a very public process with this Board and whoever the Board would like to facilitate that with as we launch into discussions about how that property might be redeveloped. I do represent a private owner who has a position in mind about how the property should be redeveloped. I don't represent the town, and my representation is clear. My last suggestion would be that for those who are concerned about how the property might be developed, if not this proposal, I think they need to think about what alternative proposals might be out there and whether those make sense economically to the property owner and whether they otherwise make sense to the town. And so I would challenge anyone who has concerns to raise those concerns, raise them at the next meeting, raise them with the Board, raise them otherwise, but tell us what alternatives they think are feasible and why they should be considered by the property owner who's putting forward this opportunity. I can tell you that the future development of this, that the property will be for sale within the next year. The market is being set at a very high bar. There's already been one high number that's been rejected out of a plan to try to move this process, this plan forward as one that we think, the owner thinks, and many, I know many think, is the right end use. Lot of issues and details to work through on that. It will not be a single-family dwelling. It will not be a small subdivision. It will be something else. The McKean family wants to move forward with this process with the Planning Board and with the town. We'll see where we net out between now and January town meeting. So I invite as many people as possible to come to the library on the 25th, to watch it on television, to come back to the Planning Board, to engage in public process. It's important. This is an important piece of the decision-making for the town with respect to real estate development in the future, and we want to engage in that process in a healthy, helpful way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak at Citizens Speak this evening? Okay, quickly, I just want to remind, we had two people--
Brian, we actually, we got a letter this afternoon that the resident who wrote it asked if it would be possible to be read tonight. She wasn't able to attend for Citizens Speak. Is that something? I told her I would ask.
We've had discussions about this in the past. I'm okay with it, but anybody have any objections? No? Okay, go for it. Thank you.
It's on the ICE House Matters, why I bring it up. This is from Lisa Cool of 41 Robin Street, and she writes, "As a lifelong Milton resident, I have resided on Myers Lane and Robin Street, which is close to the McKean property. I feel as though I am an abutter of sorts to this property and wholeheartedly look to see the project completed. For years, our side of town has lacked the same commercial businesses as East Milton, and I feel as though we have been cheated. Don't get me wrong, I wouldn't want an influx of development, but what they are proposing seems like a great fit and a necessity. I constantly cross the line over to Hyde Park or Dedham when convenience or specialty items could be bought over on our side of town. East Milton has the gold mine Milton marketplace, and while I understand it will not be as large as that, it will be a smaller version with some of the same items. As well as local shopping, maybe it could also serve to employ some of our local youth and unemployed adults. I really feel as though the town really needs to allow this project to be developed. It can now be the other side of Milton's gold mine." Thank you, Lisa Cool.
Okay, thank you. In the two minutes we have before a public hearing, I just want to quickly mention to the public that we do not have anything before us right now for the property that's being discussed tonight at Citizens Speak and with regard to this letter. We all know that there's a lot of discussion going on. Mr. Corcoran informed the town that there's a meeting on July 25th at 6:30 at the library, and certainly people with interest in that project should definitely plan on attending. I would anticipate that there will be something being discussed at the Planning Board in the very near future from the standpoint of potentially doing some zoning for that project, property, at a future town meeting, and we invite all comments. We have received quite a few letters on this. We don't necessarily have an application to apply those letters to, but the letters will be kept on file, and then we can bring them forward as applications become relevant, I guess. So just wanted to remind everybody that at the moment, we don't have anything before us. We're certainly all aware of it as residents and elected officials, but at the moment, we don't have an actual application for zoning or for a specific project in front of us. So that gets us just about to 7:15. We're going to have, we're going to start with Kinsale Lane subdivision revision. I'm going to have you come up. We have to wait 15 seconds for formal purposes, but you can get yourself ready to present.
I have, as we go along, at 7:30, I would just, if you'd like to announce that the hearing will follow the conclusion of the Kinsale Lane thing.
Instead of opening it and continuing it?
Just state that, and the same thing is at 7:45.
Thank you for that. So--
Reminder, Brian, I have, in the past, recused myself on Kinsale Lane.
Okay.
All right, so I will step across the hall. Somebody can retrieve me.
For Alex's recommendation. So we have four public hearings tonight. Our first is going to begin momentarily on the Kinsale Lane subdivision that is scheduled and advertised for 7:15. We have a 7:30 public hearing for Thayer Nursery that will follow the 7:15 hearing. We will not interrupt the 7:15 hearing to announce that. We then have a 7:45 public hearing for Beechwood Lane, 683 Brushhill Road, definitive subdivision. Again, that will follow immediately the Thayer Nursery special permit application. And we have finally an 8 o'clock public hearing scheduled for Novara at 565 Adams Street for a site plan modification, and that will follow the Brushhill Road definitive subdivision plan. Thank you.
And if, as these times occur, just in case someone comes in late, you can say it again.
Certainly. Okay, very good. Mr. Corcoran, I'm sorry, do we have a question?
Yes.
Yes, so I was not a member of the Board when this hearing opened, so I have abstained previously, I think. I don't know if we've ever actually voted on this application, but I don't know if you can vote with two people.
We cannot.
It would appear that we don't have enough voting members.
I'm not sure it's ready to be voted on tonight, but I think that--
Why don't you make your presentation?
I'll make the presentation.
And then Mike can watch it.
And Mike can watch it, and then we can--
Okay.
We won't, we're not ready to vote because we don't have a final mylaw set of plans.
Okay.
Ned Corcoran, counsel on behalf of Dennis and Mary Cohane, who are the owners of Lot 2 on the Kinsale subdivision, and I can see that you have a plan up there. I'm going to actually come up and I'm going to hand out, while I do that, an email that I've received and a copy of those plans, just in case you don't have them. So I apologize for, what you see here is a slight modification to what was previously discussed, and that slight modification is that the, I think when we last were discussing the extension of Kinsale Lane was going to wrap off of the Lot 1 property and around this way in sort of a T with a grass paver. I received this plan from the Cohanes engineers, and they've modified that to do two things. One, create a hammerhead for a turnaround just off of the right side of the end of the driveway. And then a proposal to bring the roadway, the roadway within the right-of-way closer to the boundary line in order to be able to squeeze it around a tree and actually connect to their driveway. That would create an opportunity for emergency vehicles to come in and come out and come out to the private way on the other side. What it does do is it changes the requested relief relative to the radius of the curve from 25 feet, 25 to 15 feet. I have spoken to the engineer that if in the Board's consideration the 25-foot radius ought to remain, that was the original radius that was approved, part of the subdivision approval back in 2012, that it's possible to extend the radius out and then feather the roadway back so that it can wrap, still can come around the tree, but it would provide a wider access. I thought it was important to share that plan with Jack Grant, the fire chief, because the issue of fire access to the property is significant. I've handed you a copy of an email that I received from Jack in follow-up to a conversation that I had with him on Wednesday. Regardless of the radius, Jack's indication was that their fire apparatus are not coming all the way onto the property. They will stop approximately at the end. There's a brand-new fire hydrant at the end of Kinsale Lane with new 8-inch lane, line fully pressurized. We discussed on the phone the notion of carrying that line, at least within the right-of-way and up the driveway, for the potential to tie into the line that exists in the private way. That's an old 2-inch line that comes in off of Brushhill Road. There is a hydrant, but the town isn't really confident in its ability. It would create the opportunity for loop and improvements to fire service within, to the other dwellings that exist along that private way. And so I think that's a reasonable, I think it's a good idea, and so we would suggest that as an additional component of the plan, that we would create a water easement for the water line that would come in. So, Mike, I guess the remaining question, I hope, is whether this notion of a hammerhead as opposed to a longer T is a reasonable alternative, and whether the Board would prefer to maintain the 25-foot radius as opposed to the 15 that's shown on the newest version of the plan.
Thank you. Tim, I had a question that I had raised with you this week, my materials, about if you were able to figure out what the consensus was on requiring this to be back to the design condition if the private roadway was ever closed for any reason, and there was an answer here. I can't remember what it was, though. We had a resolution on that.
How did that, you watch the tape?
Yeah, it was more like, like a variance, you know? If there was some kind of distress, like a legitimate need, then there would be, it would be discussed as a special circumstance. That's how I read it.
I think, I think what it came down to was not, not putting in explicit language about, because I mean, the issue was if that driveway stops being the access to Lot 2, then the gravel drive becomes a paved drive and making that explicit in the decision. And I think that, that there was some stepping back from that.
I know, and I'm asking why? Because it was my demand, and I finally was, do you recall? I finally backed off of it. I was on television, I was on, I was remote that night.
Tony said he didn't, he didn't want that.
I know he didn't, but I did.
And he, yeah, but there was something he said that changed your mind. I forget what it was.
But this is subdivision approval.
Mike is--
And, you know, conditions in subdivision approvals, it's not like a special permit to say the subdivision approval self-destructs if, I mean, once it's approved, it's approved.
My concern wasn't that the subdivision approval go away. My concern was that if the roadway, the private roadway that accesses the Cohanes property currently as their primary source of access goes away because someone decides to develop whatever up there with those eight lots, that this road should really be paved at that point, because this would become his primary frontage.
I think, I think the conversation sort of got to the point where it was so extremely unlikely that that would happen, that the sort of cost benefit to the homeowners was, didn't even out.
The other thing is, we want this to be a roadway that can be used. I mean, we're not just requiring these paving blocks, we're doing it because of the drainage, but we want it to be a sturdy roadway.
Right.
And we don't want the fire chief stopping at the end of Kinsale. We want him coming to the end of the road so that they can get the, use the hydrant and get a service to the people on the lane. And, I mean, fine, if the fire is in number 1035, it wouldn't have to go very far, but if it's--
If it's up the hill.
Up the hill, then you might. So I foresee the fire engines possibly going to the end there, and then how they're going to turn around, I'm not exactly sure, although I'm told that they can back well. But the T is not paved. The hammerhead is not paved, as far as I can see.
Let me just, with respect to a couple of those things. One is, the hammerhead would be built with sturdy subbase with the, with the grass pavers as exist at Curry College, capable of handling the weight of an emergency vehicle. I'm not sure if you're suggesting that a fire truck ought to be able to come around and in and up and out to fight a fire--
I mean, if it stops at the end there, next to the garage--
It stops--
If the fire's in the garage and they come and stop next to it.
Okay, well, they can come right out the driveway and right up and out the private way.
Well, I understand that's what we want to have happen.
And that can happen. The other thing, relative to the likelihood of the private way being turned off, and I know that Tony Ambrose made an appeal--
Yep. I'm sympathetic to his appeal. I'm concerned about precedent.
There are, I don't have the larger aerial here, but there are six homes that get their access from Brushhill Road via--
That roadway.
That roadway. It is inconceivable that that roadway would be discontinued for purposes of that access, unless--
I'm not sure if it's inconceivable. I agree that it's unlikely. I'm not going to concede it's conceivable, but that's fine. I've raised my point a couple of times now, so. It sounds like we're probably going in the direction of requiring the extra radius in order to make sure the engine can make that turn. And, what was your second question? Oh, and then the piping, I think, would be a welcome addition.
And is all that cross-hatch stuff paving blocks?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have specs on these paving blocks yet?
They will be provided as part of the plan.
And it'll be the same type of paving block as at Curry? So there really should be provision for the fire apparatus to be able to exit by the driveway. Emergency vehicles should have that right.
Provision in the decision that emergency vehicles would be able to come back out.
Sure. I mean-- No, I think you're saying go up through the private road that's existing, correct?
Yeah, I mean, go up the driveway and down the private road.
Right.
If they, you know, come onto the, onto the thing, they don't have to back up.
Correct. Well, I think that clearly the, as it relates to this lot, that lot can be burdened with the obligation that emergency vehicles will be able to gain access to the private way via the driveway.
Right.
It's currently the way that emergency vehicles would access this property if they had to, historically, to fight a fire or otherwise. In fact, one of the things that the chief acknowledged tonight in his email, but as we discussed it, they now have two points of access, and a more direct point of access via Walkout Avenue, Walkout Road, and Consider Lane than what's now not, you know, a winding private way. So this has improved things significantly with respect to responding to emergencies at this dwelling, but I agree that burning the property with additional access up through the private way is not, I'm sure--
How are we going to, I mean, you have a curve and a roadway, but it's all paving How would you delineate within the paving blocks where the roadway is? And you can see that there is a line coming down.
I think the, I think the full width of the paving blocks is intended to be the width of the driveway.
Okay, so that's the roadway. The paving blocks are the roadway.
Because the roadway itself got shifted closer to the property line--
Yeah.
--it narrowed the radius from that perspective. It's possible to bump out the paving blocks on the top of the plan to create the wider radius, and then, you know, we did, we did this move here, so we took this length and we built the paving blocks out to here, and then feathered it this way--
Yeah.
--to create that swimming radius and plenty of room to feather that in and to avoid it. And that's what the plan--
Okay. Well, I'm reasonably agreeable, so long as we have the access for those emergency vehicles.
I think in the context that you've described it, I think that's perfectly reasonable. We'll present that.
Brian, should there be a section view on this plan showing the pavers and the subbase and everything like that?
There will be a construction detail plan that will show. We have one, obviously, that shows the subbase and the gravel. We'll have separate construction detail will show that.
You might describe the gravel in better terms because gravel, as I understand it, is just dirt. And this is
Gravel on top of the subbase.
Well, this is crushed down.
Crushed stone or
Yeah.
Is another word for it as well.
And have that detail. Tony Ambrose is actually building.
He's being relocated to Syracuse, New York.
Oh, wow.
So the house is on the market.
Right. Well, thank you very much. We will move forward with that suggestion.
Thank you.
So continuation.
The 28th, if it's at all possible not to do it, we've got a public hearing for the Town Farm Cluster and a public hearing for the 245 Highland Street Cluster on the 28th. But we are all clear on the 11th.
Do you have a
There's no rush here.
There's no rush, is there?
I, I don't think there, there is a rush. The only, you know,
Does this potentially hold up to the offer of sale?
The only issue is describing in a, in a, as they market the property, that this remains an issue for resolution. It would be helpful if we could be back.
This isn't going to take very long, is it?
But this way, if, if, if plans come back and they meet what we've talked about, I think the hearing is five minutes.
Yeah.
I agree.
Me too.
I think we, just from the purposes of the home is for sale, let's try to do it on the, we'll squeeze it in. We can do it after Highland and
I'm going to be here.
I'm going to be here for Highland anyway, so.
Knock it on the end.
So it's 7:15 and 7:30 for those two public hearings.
Just think it's 7:45. We'll do, handle it the same way we did tonight.
Thank you very much.
All right, it is 7:34. We're going to roll into the Thayer Nursery Special Permit Hearing. Applicants step forward.
Good evening.
Do you have a presentation over to Mr. Delbride who are in discussion?
Can get right into your discussion if you'd like.
We'll wait for, now it's maxed, this may be able to get settled.
This was extra.
Are we going to hear from the public first?
Before we go into that. All right, so just a quick reminder for the public. We're here tonight to discuss a modification to the special permit, excuse me, a new, a new application for a special permit for 217, 237, and 270 Hillside Street and 0 and 244 Street on behalf of Oldfield Family LLC owner and Joshua Oldfield, Maggie Oldfield, and their, their nursery corporation as applicants. And this is a special permit and site plan approval. We've had testimony given. We've left the public hearing open. The board is going to be considering likely to draft special permits this evening for consideration. And if the applicant doesn't have anything to add, I'll ask you to step back and open up the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. John Rowe, 23 Parker Drive, and the Director of Butter of Thayer Nursery. I'd like to bring to the board's attention, which the board is probably aware of this, that Thayer Nursery has a long history of noncompliance with the town zoning regulations as well as noncompliance with provisions of special permits that they have been issued over the past. As we speak, Thayer Nursery is in noncompliance of the special permit issued by the Board of Appeals that was amended in 2000, 2002. They continue to operate bobcats prior to 8 o'clock in the morning during the week, and they continue to operate bobcats prior to 9 o'clock in the morning on Saturdays. This is in violation and they have been cited by the Building Commissioner. They, this was several weeks ago they were cited for this activity, and they continue to do it. They're in violation of cease and desist orders that are banished by the Milton Zoning Board of Appeals. They are currently in violation of a cease and desist order issued by the Building Commissioner, the Milton Building Commissioner. They are currently in violation of a cease and desist order issued by Norfolk Superior Court. They are currently in violation of a cease and desist order issued by the Land Court. They continue to snub their nose at any provision provided in the Milton zoning bylaws and in any special permit that limits commercial activity in a residential zone. They have violated the Planning Board's special permit that was issued by this board in December of last year by locating a fence within nine feet of an abiding property. The permit calls for the fence to be at least 15 feet from nearby's property. The zoning bylaw, I believe, requires that the fence be at least 15 feet from nearby property. I don't know how this happened. I do know that the building, the planning director was involved in this decision. I don't understand does, why the planning director has the authority to change or pick and choose what provisions of a special permit will be adhered to that this board issued. I have concerns that if you issue another, another special permit, that the planning director will, in conjunction with the applicant, pick and choose what is adhered to and what isn't. This is a fact, that this fence was not placed in the proper place, was placed within nine feet of an abiding property owner's property, and it was done in conjunction with conversations with the applicant and the Milton Planning Director. I'd also like to bring to your attention issues that I had with the, some of the procedures at the last hearing or the last review of the applicant's application whereas the, this board issued the special permit in December of last year. After the public hearing was closed, there were deliberations with the applicant brought to the table here, and several items were deliberated on and changes were made to the draft of the special permit without public input. And an example of that is noisy equipment. There were restrictions on the usage of noisy equipment. And during, after the public hearing was closed, this board decided that gators would be exempt from this, from, from restrictions on their operation. A gator is a diesel-powered vehicle that emanates noxious diesel fumes and is very loud, and these vehicles operate on the property constantly. And gators should not be able to run on the property without restrictions. They should be restricted as most diesel-powered vehicles, which are very noisy and emanate noxious fumes, should have restrictions. And so that's one example of the procedures that were followed that I don't believe are, I don't believe that there should be changes to an application after the public hearing has closed when, you know, the public did not, was not allowed to offer any input on the operation of gators. Thayer operates in a residential zone. According to the bylaws, residential zones are not allowed to have any commercial activity. I live in a residential zone. I abut Thayer Nursery. They must demonstrate that anything that they do commercially is in harmony with the nature of the residentially zoned neighborhood. So far, they have not demonstrated that what they're proposing to do is in harmony with the residential zone. They've not demonstrated that the delivery of a thousand cores of kiln-dried firewood over several months every year via tractor-trailer truck, 18-wheel tractor-trailer truck, and then unloaded with bobcat front-end loaders and then reloaded into dump trucks over the entire winter season, mostly on Saturday and Sunday, is in harmony with a residential zone. That's an extremely high-impact operation that I don't, it just is not in harmony with the spirit of a residential zone. They haven't demonstrated that utilizing the property as a staging area for a large-scale construction landscaping operation is in harmony with a residential zone. The equipment utilized in their landscape construction business includes five diesel-powered dump trucks, four diesel-powered bobcat front-end loaders, diesel-powered gators, the operation of welding and grinding equipment, the operation of pneumatic wrenches. The operation of this heavy equipment, diesel-powered equipment cannot be reasonable. I don't believe that any reasonable person could suggest or could demonstrate that this is in harmony with a residential zone, and they must do that according to the law, Massachusetts statutes. That must be demonstrated. I would dare to say that there's probably not one person on this board that would want this operation in their neighborhood, especially not next to them. And I don't, I don't want this operation. I'm asking this board to not issue a special permit. One, because they haven't demonstrated that what they want to do in the commercial zone is in harmony with the neighborhood. They have not demonstrated that they can adhere to any restrictions that if you did issue a permit that were in that permit. The very permit that you issued in December, they disregarded. If you issue another permit, again, are they going to pick and choose what they, what they implement and what they don't? The permit that you issued has different starting times for bobcats and heavy equipment than the permit issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals. The permit that you issued allows bobcats to start at 7:00 in the morning. The Zoning Board of Appeals doesn't allow the nursery bobcats until, to start until 8:00. You know, this is an issue that you have different start times for the same type of equipment. I don't, it can't be regulated. This is the problem that we've had in the neighborhood for decades, not since I came along, decades. And I think everyone in this board is aware of the issues that have been caused by Thayer and the neighborhood and the multiple, multiple Zoning Board of Appeals hearings going back to 1987. So I strongly urge this board to take into consideration the history of the party, of the applicant, and, and their behavior, even their blatant disregard for provisions of the permit that you issued in December of 2015 and to deny the, the special permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Giannetti?
Field of Hill, 23 Parker Drive. I have three quick things I want to say. Number one is, I still don't believe that you have shown that the applicants qualify for presenting an application. I don't believe that Thayer Nursery could possibly be a successor in interest to Robert Oldfield. The 1967 special permit and amendment in 1987 do not permit the special permit to be passed to a non-human person. And so that has to be considered by the board. Also, Maggie and Josh have not shown that they operated a nursery in July of 2012. Thayer Nursery Corporation, they have done that without a special permit, but they have not shown that they've done that. So if we don't show that the applicants qualify, if they don't demonstrate before the board that they qualify, we're going to be in the same situation as we, we were the last time in the Land Court. The second thing I want to say is that commercial businesses have absolutely no rights under the current zoning. The only rights that they would have is, are the rights that you give them. And again, as John said, that business must be in harmony with the residential neighborhood. They have no rights, none. Finally, I'd like to say that seniority has no standing in the law. Just because someone's been there for 50 years doesn't give them superior standing to someone who's been there for seven years. That seniority is not recognized in, in state law or in the town law. And so I would say that as a resident abiding by the zoning, as a resident of seven years, though I haven't been there for 50, I've been there for seven, I have equal rights to anyone surrounding me, whether they've been there for one year or 50 or 100. So I, I don't recognize that seniority has given the Oldfields any special rights in this town. Thanks.
Anyone else would like to speak to this application? Okay. Any motions from the board?
Well, the zoning does say a fence has to be 15, at least 15 feet from the law line, so a site plan showing nine feet is just, it needs to be changed. It needs to be at least 15 feet. I gather that there are some trees that shouldn't be removed. I don't see why the fence can't be 15 feet away without, and leave the trees alone.
Well, it seems like
I don't, if it's 15 feet away, I don't, I don't see that they say, well, now we've got to cut down the trees. Putting it nine feet and having the trees on the Thayer side doesn't help the Teaven's any. It seems to me that if the trees are going to be useful and decorative, it would be best that they be on the, on the Teaven's side of the, of the fence. So I think the fence has to be relocated and the trees have to remain. I could say that. But because it is, the zoning is, is simply clear, 15 feet. You can't, we can't waive the zoning.
I understand.
We can't waive the zoning, even if we wanted to.
It can move the fence in the other direction, meaning it could be 17 feet.
Right.
Could be 70 feet, right.
17, 70, whatever.
May I ask a question relative to that?
You can go forward again as the applicant.
Two meetings prior to this, I thought we had a discussion that the special permit, there was a stay on it so that it wasn't actually in effect. Am I wrong in my recollection about that?
No, the permit never went into effect.
So there's really no violation because there's no permit that it's in effect?
Well, the planning director also made what he thought was a minor amendment to the site plan in order to accommodate these trees.
But the question is
Which was in violation of the zoning, so the, the minor modification can't stand.
But the question is, we're looking at a new application now, which could basically request a different location of the fence. Is that not true?
Because the zoning bylaw upon which the special permit was issued requires the 15 feet.
Gotcha. So it would So it would take an amendment to the actual zoning bylaw?
Requires town meeting.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Can't, it just can't do it. It's just not doable.
Gotcha, okay.
I could add a little bit. Josh Oldfield again. I was out surveying the property approximately an hour ago. I was the one, in conjunction with other people, Mr. Tevens was involved in that discussion. I understand what Mr. Whiteside's saying, 15 feet's 15 feet. I don't have a problem with 15 feet. There are seven trees that will have to be compromised if we go to 15 feet because of the zigzag approach. 15 feet goes to 17 feet goes to... It's not just an opening space, it's a swath of wood.
Can you show us on a plan, please? I mean, honestly, it's not, it's almost a moot point because then we can't make a bottom...
Understood. But I'm okay with the 15 feet.
You can set the fence further back.
Well, no, it can be, if you want to preserve, the trees can be preserved, you can put the fence 20 feet away. You say no, but that isn't actually totally your decision. But show us, show us the problem.
Well, I disagree. I feel like, where have you been since December? This fence went up in December.
Do you mind, Maggie, if I just... So I just want to say, I'm a little sympathetic in this case because they were given direction from the town that they could make this adjustment. So I don't find the applicant completely responsible. That said, I think that what you say stands.
We don't either.
But I just want to hold them, I don't know how we could hold them harmless, but I think that we should make recognition of the fact that they were...
If they change the zoning, then it goes to 15 feet. And that's it, very simple. And they'll take the trees down tomorrow.
Yeah, and if trees have to come down, they have to come down. If, so there's...
All I know, when trees are taken down, I'm not voting for them.
We need to see the plan.
Let's see. Show us.
Again, the fence went up in December.
I have not seen the fence, and I did not say anything about nine feet. If I had been asked, I would have said the zoning requires 15 feet, because it does. And we can't waive the zoning. And if Bill Marshall did something to that fence, he shouldn't have, and he shouldn't have known that.
The homeowner agreed to it.
Correct.
It doesn't matter.
Okay, let me just tell him, just a fact.
It's not a fact, I'm the homeowner.
All right.
So it was already dug?
It was not dug. The holes were dug, that was the difference. So the area in discussion... Is this area...
Do you have the zoning?
Right here.
I do.
Is a total, there's approximately 40 feet out of a 900-foot linear fence, that's in discussion. Behind Joe Henning and Rowe is 30 feet setback, not 15. This property is 15. There's approximately 45 feet, that's six feet off, out of 900.
Six, what do you mean, six feet off?
From nine to 15.
Gotcha. It's six feet off of where it's supposed to be.
Forty feet out of 900.
So it's these, this, right here that we're talking about?
Yes, that bump off right there out of this whole run. This is 30 feet, and this is 15, and that's nine.
Mr. Oldfield, is that, so that's showing the nine foot?
Yes.
And if it was at 15 feet, would it line up with the existing, it would just continue...
It would line up with this setback here.
And it would continue in a straight line?
Well, no, because Joe Henning is 30 feet.
So what are you showing? Okay, so that's showing nine, it would be six feet further into your property?
Correct, yes. Right here, here's the fence, here's Tevens. And the fence comes down this property line, which is cash, goes to Tevens, comes back to Joe Henning and Rowe, which is 30 feet.
If anybody from the public would like to see this, you're welcome to step forward. I just wanted to let, sorry, you know you can't see this.
Maybe Mr. Tevens should come up here and get a look at it.
And the holes were dug, and the installer, myself, and Mr. Clark were there to witness.
Do you want to speak, Mr. Tevens? It's up to you, no? Okay.
Could we, could Tim read the email that Chris Tevens submitted?
Or I think, have we done that before? You've gotten this email before?
Yeah.
So the issue is not whether the fence can stay where it is, because it can't. So the issue is whether it goes to 15 feet or it goes to some other depth.
But the zoning says 15.
Well, it can go wider than 15.
Come on. You grant the zoning, presumably.
We'll go to 15.
We'll go to 15, and if some trees have to come down...
At least 15, that's a quote, at least 15.
I don't want a tree fumed.
Well, then, avoid it.
Is there a plan that would allow you to move the fence further into your property?
No. But now we're in the drainage swale.
Do you have a copy of the plan showing the drainage?
Not on me, I can go...
Do you have it on the website?
Can you pull it up?
Pull it up.
They're on the website, I'm sorry, they are.
Can you pass the plan down? It's hard to see. I can see the swale on this drawing being at that location, and they can point it out up here as well. Let me just grab my pen. Ah, you moved it.
Sorry, sorry.
Right there, that's the swale line.
But I can't put the fence over.
So in here, we've got about, sort of an amount. We don't know where the trees are, that's of course a problem. The trees aren't in the swale.
I did take photos.
And the swale only goes halfway along the...
Do you recall when we did the site walk?
It's too close.
I mean, I can't remember.
I took photos, but I'd have to find by what approximately timeframe we went.
So the fence could be in the swale, just elevated.
It's not ideal because the bottom would still need to allow for the water flow, so you'd have a gap in terms of your acoustic...
You would have a gap, but you would have a bank, and then it would go down.
But from an acoustic point of view, it's probably better not to have that gap.
It's a question of what noise does. I mean, if this, would noise tunnel under the fence, or would it go in a straight line?
Noise bounces around, but I don't know the answer to that, but my understanding was that we needed very tight, as tight as possible around all of the fence, right?
That was the whole idea.
That was my understanding from the presentation.
Well, I think that's right. Especially at the ground level, but the swale goes down, and so the bank of your swale could be a little higher than the bottom of the fence, and it seems to me that should do it. You're the art, what do you think?
I have my doubts about that, but I'm not an acoustic engineer, so I can't say with any certainty. But my understanding would be that that gap could be a problem. And then, just from a maintenance point of view, having things within the swale, I think is more problematic in terms of what the swale is supposed to do, and if you need to, you're going to have posts and potentially materials sitting closer to the water that would be captured in that swale. The, my recollection, and I could look for the photos, is that there's, it's pretty dense landscape in that area, which is why we walked it when we did. I don't recall the stakes exactly in that corner, but it was staked out when we did our site walk. And I don't recall, maybe Josh and Maggie, do you recall when we did the site walk? And I could look up my photos I took that day? All right.
You weren't there, were you?
Well, I think, are there any other, before we go into another discussion about the draft of the permit, is there any other items that the board has questions on besides the fence? You know, I think there would be potentially two resolutions here. One is we can just leave it the way it was and say 15 feet, and it happens the way it happens, and the other is that 15... Right, the other is that you'd put forward that it could be 15 feet, and, but it also, it has to be at least 15 feet, and it can't disrupt existing vegetation, that would be the other way to do it, I guess.
We can't change the zoning now either.
We can't change the zoning, but we can change the special permit language. We're allowed to put a condition on it.
But where the zoning says a minimum, but it says no maximum, so how...
Well, the idea is you can't...
I mean, the idea, you could say it comes all the way back to a building, and who's to say it doesn't? I mean, how do you set a parameter?
We do. They've set it.
Right. But the zoning, if we're living by the language of the zoning, I'm just trying to understand how we can be quite clear.
Well, it means they can put the fence back 25, 30, 40 feet, we can, you know...
I don't think that was the board's intent at the time that this was all drafted, to have it be that far back.
No, our intent was to have it be 15 feet, but I think the board at least would allow you to make the fence 16 or 17 feet in order to get around an obstacle.
But we do not require that they maintain trees in order to meet the fence distance requirement.
Not in our original special permit, we do not.
We can require that.
So this kind of starts to feed into the larger question about the special permit draft, which is, you know, which we're going to be looking at tonight. We have two drafts in front of us. One is basically a red line of the existing special permit that was issued in December that effectively changes the reference in accordance with the town meeting that was held in May, and makes a few other grammatical changes. And the other is that we have a new draft special permit that sort of follows this I am personally concerned about using a new special permit based on the fact that we really, in reviewing this application, we were really having most of our discussions based on the idea that it was going to be mimicking this existing special permit that was issued in December. So I, for one, would not feel comfortable tonight voting on the new one because I haven't, I don't really know what's in here that's different. So we'd have to walk through it again.
No, we could do that. There's not much in here that's different. I mean, like on page one, I mentioned the fact that they filed an application and give the date of it. I think that's just stuff that should be in the special permit.
Is that against the original special, the existing special permit?
It's not in the original special permit.
So if I can just explain, you have two, I distributed two redline hard copies tonight. One should say original SP in the corner. This is the special permit that was issued in December with some very minor modifications that were discussed at the public hearing at the end of June. The, there's another copy, I should say AW edits, in the upper right corner. This is basically the revised application that the applicant submitted for the last public hearing, sort of modified back into a special permit, so all of the...
You said the last public hearing, can you use the question?
June 23rd.
So this application?
Yes. This is, this is, this is the revised application for this special permit application, because that application was modeled on the original special permit. So everything that happened on June 23rd, all of the insofar-as language that was discussed, I distributed an earlier version of this on Friday. Alex made some edits that are redlined in here. So everything that happened on June 23rd is reflected in this copy. I just changed the language to make it sort of special permit language as opposed to application language, so that's what you're looking at.
So I thought when we went through this at the last meeting, we put in a few very minor changes, but the intention was really to keep it more...
We weren't deliberating, we were just discussing the application. We weren't discussing a decision, we were discussing the application.
Right, but we were discussing the path forward.
Well, we were discussing certain things in the application. We, I suppose we might as well close the hearing and enter deliberations.
We had someone raising their hand from the public, so let's hear from the public one last time, and then we'll close the public hearing. So I'll ask the applicant to step back one more time and ask Mr. Jettick to step forward so he can speak. Mr. Jettick, you're recognized.
Thank you. I want to ensure that the drainage specifications have not changed. The town engineer reviewed the drainage plan through the new application vis-à-vis the drainage plan in the old. Can I be absolutely 100% sure that the drainage plan remains 100% consistent with what was approved in the original special permit?
I think you should request that, and we'll make sure that that's part of our permit.
We mentioned, we mentioned what, we incorporate the drainage...
And the plan's dated from back then? Yeah, so yes, you can.
So the, there is no intention on the part of the board, at least at this moment, to make any changes to the drainage plan.
That's correct.
In light of the new application. I don't, I haven't reviewed the new application, I don't know if there were any changes intended to the drainage plan, but the drainage plan is extremely important to us, and we would ask that there be no changes to the drainage plan, okay?
So both of the special permits that are in front of us, whichever draft we were going to deliberate on, they both reference the plans that were, that were attached to the original special permit issued in December.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, motion?
I would like to, I'd like to have a hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So let's move into deliberations then. So we were discussing, so Alex or Tim can answer this question, but I guess, as I start looking at these two, what I want to understand is where the draft that tracks the application differs from the special permit that we issued in December outside of the small tweaks that we did as part of our discussions at the last meeting in order to move this forward.
So the timeline is, the revised application that was discussed on June 23rd looks a lot like this, because it tracked the original special permit. So everything that the board discussed in the last public hearing on June 23rd is basically, those were discussions about essentially changes that the applicant had made to the original special permit. And some of them, some of them stayed, some of them went. The fence issue was discussed, there was another, the issue about the gap in the fence, where the gates are, that language wasn't in the original special permit, it was in the revised application. It was in the revised application, so that-
But it's in this draft of the special permit now.
The original SP?
Not that, not that one that you have in your hand.
Sure it is. It's right here. I just read it. You, well, it's in here now because you redlined it in.
Which one are you looking at?
That's what I'm saying. So the correction is in both drafts.
So the, yes, the original, both of these have the changes that were approved essentially discussed by the board.
Discussed.
So yes, that, that bit about the gap in the fence, there's another one, the semicolons in the enforcement reporting issue, that's in both of these. Those, as, there might be one or two more, but those are the only changes in this original SP document. Besides from those, this is identical to the special permit-
Okay.
-that was issued. The, the, the other one, the AW edits one, is I took what came out of the June 23rd public hearing, which was some edits to the revised application, and I included those edits and I distributed to the board.
This is what we received the other day? Or no, this is what we received last week?
The pre-AW edits one is what you received the other day.
So what you distributed was something different than this original SP?
Yes.
With the revisions included?
Yes. The thing that I distributed on Friday to the board for your review was the revised application, the language changed to be a special permit as opposed to an application, and then including some of the changes that were discussed on June 23rd. That is what Alex has made some edits on. So all of the, all of the changes in this-
Just to be clear, Tim, we have not received this via email? The one that's AW edits, or we did receive via email?
We did.
We did. Last night.
We did.
Yesterday. Yes, that's, that's what, okay. That, I did review that. I just wanted to be clear that that's what I reviewed. Okay.
What do you think, what?
Now, this is from yesterday.
So now I'd like Alex to talk for a minute, if you don't mind. What is the benefit from legally, or what's the, what's the benefit of using this versus the originals as modified to reflect our discussions of the last hearing?
Well, if you don't engage, funny too.
Okay.
As you recall, we, we've had a fair amount of discussion that this residential zone and that opening up a business in a residential zone is, is simply inconsistent with the zoning and everything else with the nature of a residential zone. And we, we don't discuss that argument anywhere in the original decision. We just let it go. And I suggest that the answer is that their nursery is entitled to operate a nursery in a residential zone, and in fact, it is operating a nursery in a residential zone. And a lot of, a number of neighbors are complaining bitterly about the noise coming from their nursery. And this is without there being a landscaping business. And what we're doing is we're making the existing situation better. Where it's going to be less noise, there's going to be less odor, there's going to be less dust. It's going to be a better situation even with the landscaping business operating out of the site. If we just leave their nursery to its devices, the neighbors who are complaining will continue to complain because there is not going to take any of the steps that we specify to make conditions better. And the overall effect of this per, of this permit is that operations at that site are going to be better for the neighbors and better for their investment. And saying that is important.
So that's, that's helpful. So as we-
And there are, you know, the number of changes I've suggested, I mean, on page one, I suggest that we, we specify that there's been an application and that we're, we're operating on that amended application. It, it, you know, it doesn't take much.
It's not, it's not your changes that are concerning me. The changes, what I want to make sure I understand is as you go through this, there's, the original has one, two, you know, one purpose, two intent. So I haven't gone through and read them side by side to see where there are changes and that's where my concern lies.
When did you send out the revision without my?
Friday.
Friday, yeah.
Last Friday.
Right. They went out electronically and, and in hard copy.
I, I mean, if you haven't read it, you, you haven't read it, but I did read it and I picked up a few things. I thought it was, I thought it was good. I thought it was good and I thought that it was, there were a few changes that needed to be made. I mean, Mike specifying when the application was filed is important. On page two, I thought it was important since we've gone through the town meeting mentioning subsection 3A 7, that we might as well mention that in the purpose. And when I changed the purpose, I simply took the zoning and quoted it. The original permit paraphrased the zoning. I said, you know, you left out. And, and the reason it paraphrased it is that the person who wrote it didn't believe that the special permit had been issued pursuant to section 3A 7, or 3A 2 and 4. And you may recall, I wrote something up saying that indeed it had been, but that was omitted. In, in any event, I think we should have mentioned the 7.
So it's not, yeah, it's not, all of these things that you're saying are fine, and I've, I have read both of these, just to clarify. What I haven't done is looked at, I haven't done a compare, contrast, legal compare document to document to see if E1, E Romanet 1 letter A matches E Romanet 1 letter A. That's my only concern. So as long as Tim has done that.
Well-
Because otherwise, I'm going to do it.
These things line up.
They do. They do appear to line up.
They line up. Anything that's different between the revised application on which this-
My concern is what's different between the revised application and the special permit.
I have not taken these side by side and done a compare.
Well, then I, then we can't vote on it tonight, in my opinion, because I have not done that. So the only one I'm willing to vote on is the modified version of the original special permit, because if, if we're going to go, I, I need to know that these are going to say the same things. We have little things happening in the field where people are making six-foot adjustments on the fence.
Yes.
And I'm not going to just, I'm not going to take it on everybody's word. The public hearing's closed, I'm sorry. I'm not going to-
That's what I was asking, I didn't hear you close.
Oh, we did close it. Yes, yes. I didn't, I haven't done it. I'm sorry. I, I, I haven't done it and I, I'm not comfortable making that, making, relying on good, good faith that that's been done at this point. I have to, I have to express that. So the only one I'd be willing to vote on is the original special permit. I'm happy to continue to look at this one and make sure we do that, but I just, I heard Mike raising concerns about this at the last meeting. I raised concerns about this at the last meeting. So unless we have an actual acknowledgement that the language is the same on the substantive portions and not just the, you know, the, the accompanying text, I, I don't feel comfortable. I'm sorry.
I think the important thing is to read it and make sure that it affects what the intention of the board is because a side-by-side comparison of the original didn't make any sense. In, in other words, I'd simply read the revision and see if you, see if you have changes that you'd like to make in it, but that's what we're here for.
So my concern is that I wasn't here for the original extensive deliberation on this decision. So what I was hoping we could do is make the minor adjustments that were discussed at the last meeting to keep the document largely the same, based on all of your good work last year. I, I suppose this is likely very similar, but it doesn't give me the same level of comfort that I would have had voting on just the original document with the very, very minor adjustments that we talked about at the last meeting. Of course, those are unique considerations, but that's how I feel.
I think the original document is, in not discussing why we find that this permit should be issued was a huge mistake and that I would, I would definitely not, just for that reason, one, I would not vote to reissue a defective decision. And I, I think that we have to mention the zoning change that we went through, which isn't in the original document either because the zoning isn't mentioned because the author of that document didn't think it was applicable.
May I suggest that, that we go through the version that has the edits which Alex believes helps clarify?
I think we can do that. That's probably a good assumption.
And I don't, I mean, I did read, read through all of these that were issued and watched the tape from the meeting that I missed. I have an understanding of what was discussed at the last meeting. I have an understanding of these. I don't think it's going to take us a long time and I think we just should give everyone who's put a lot of time into this, including the applicants and the others in this, this board and the prior board, let's just do it.
Let's just do it. I think that's a good decision.
While you do that, I will write a proposal for changing the fence plan.
Perfect. Thank you. This won't take long. I agree with Cheryl. I think it's a good solution, Cheryl. Thank you for making it. The applicant will be happy. Let's just do it. Because again, I'm not trying to be disruptive. I just, I need to know that the language is identical when it comes to the substantitive issues. I trust Alex very much in the, in the additional language he's put in. That's not the language I'm concerned about.
Okay. So let's go.
Okay. So I think we can start probably, let's see.
Right. I just ran a compare between the two documents.
Excellent. That's fantastic. So we can do it really very quickly then. Thank you for doing that, Tim.
So, original document up here is the, your original SP revised is, you, you're a little more familiar with how this function works, so you can-
Yep.
But this, this is, this is language that, that is in Alex's edits, that is not in the original.
Fine. I'm fine with this language.
There's a deletion of the revision date on the plan.
Where did that come from?
Yeah, this makes me, this is what I was worried about. These are the kind of things I'm worried about. So what is that, so can we explain this? So five Gs for each.
What, that it was revised?
Yeah, just because it changes the plan. That's what, these are the kind of things I was-
This is, this is based on, on language in the revised application, so.
Yeah, but we didn't discuss that. That's the-
I would say that we should leave that the way it was.
I agree.
Well, when was, I mean, why did we take that out? I mean, when was the plan last revised?
Plan was last revised on November 20th, 2015.
And that was the plan we originally included in our approval.
Well, then, I mean, why would we take that out?
We're not.
That's, that's why we're going through this right now. Thank you.
So the, and this is, this is a little tough to read now because it's sort of, but-
This is just correcting the town meeting reference by the looks of things.
Well, but what it, what it's doing is, this is where Alex just referred to-
Yep.
-quoting the-
This is the date on this plan. That is the date on that plan.
Yeah, it's November 20th. So I, I'm just going to go in here and I have to do these individually.
Tim, if you go up to next and then you, you hit next, can you just accept them individually that way?
I'm, I'm, I want to, I want to get this I real quick. This, this used to say subsection N dot 2.
Yeah.
Now it just says subsection N paragraph 2.
Yeah.
Ditto for this. It's a space.
Yeah.
So just say subject to appropriate terms and conditions as opposed to subject to the cer, terms and conditions set forth herein.
That's-
The issues?
Seems inconsequential.
Okay.
It's a space. So I think here's a relevant-
Yeah.
-change between, because an affidavit now exists and can be referred to. Can I accept that?
We decided in the last meeting, we said that was fine. Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
What is this? Formatting? I changed the fonts on all of these so that it was consistent.
Okay.
It's just another formatting.
So this was just an additional reference we're putting in? There's nothing substantive in that, so that's-
Looks like not.
No problem with that. Okay. It's fine. Yeah. It's not, I don't think anybody cares. Yeah, okay. I mean, this is a...
He's wrong. I mean, I'll speak up if I see something.
Okay.
This is another formatting font.
Okay.
Here's, it's a little more substantive than the others.
That's a good add.
Well, thank you.
Is this deleting commas or inserting commas? Well, this is now, I guess Alex is working on this language right now. This is the fence issue.
Yeah. But the language hasn't changed.
So we'll go back to this.
Where is the nine-foot reference then? Why isn't that? So why isn't that red line just out of curiosity?
Because that was, that was something that the board discussed at the last meeting.
I understand. Okay, so I have...
So, so yes.
It was in the other special. Great, okay, understood, yeah.
But we, we have to take that.
What?
We have to revise that.
We're gonna go back to that.
Drifting out language right now.
That looks like formatting, Tim.
Yeah.
Sure.
I think that's another formatting issue.
Space. Okay.
This is more formatting.
Okay, looks like it's a redundant statement here. Okay, both of those. Refer to Alex on may and shall for sure. I said, "I'm gonna take your word on may and shall for sure." You're all set.
This is more formatting.
Yeah.
Just for people that are watching at home and in the crowd, there would be a red line either underneath or through this text if it was an actual change in the text as opposed to a font change.
Both of those are fine, Tim. Good addition. Yes. It's fine. We already talked about that.
No, this one says up to. The last one said, "More than dinner."
No more than. Yeah, it's making it consistent.
You want me to change that to, "There shall be no more than six?"
Yeah. Yeah.
Now, this is a, what Alex was discussing earlier about the...
Yeah. Yeah, I read this. I thought this is all fine with me. Everybody okay with this language? Great.
Just don't want people to get dizzy.
Just pause on this one for a moment. I know we talked about it, but I just wanna make sure everybody acknowledges that. So that's new to this. This is a new reference.
Why, where did that come from?
Yeah.
This was, this was in the revised application.
That should come out.
Well, I would take that out.
Yeah.
This is just an artifact of the application.
Okay.
We can get rid of that, right?
Just scroll down a bit, Tim, I can't read the bottom. So this just highlighted the existing procedures and we're just making work.
We tried to, to explain how the Board of Appeals works. It's always a risky business.
Because it could change. Or we could miss something.
We could, we could get it wrong.
Right. I think, I like, I like relevant procedures better. Good change.
Yeah.
Good change. Is this number two, two D, two thousand and twelve?
Why, why did we take, I mean, I don't get it.
I would go back to what we had.
Why did we identify the language out and off the ball shot law?
I actually agree with that.
Can, so I don't have to scroll back up? Can someone check their hard copy and just make sure the paragraph two C is what it says is?
Yes.
Yes, and two D is as well.
What about this bulk?
That will just go back to the way it was.
So you're gonna reject this insertion?
Correct.
Ditto for this?
Yeah.
Can someone just make sure that four D is one?
Four D is drainage plan.
Four D three?
Four D three is interim stormwater report.
The maintenance plan is two, so it should be four D two. The stormwater operation maintenance plan and the reports, oh, okay. This is...
Yeah, that's okay.
Yes, that's correct. Sorry, my apologies.
Four N is list of vehicles.
Yeah.
Seven E one, onsite traffic loading deliveries.
Seven E.
One is the required log.
One is the required log and two is the direction of travel.
Well, I'm gonna just...
Oh, no, required log is one. Delivering log required in seven E one.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. You're right. Sorry. Yeah. Yeah.
Do you like this?
Yeah.
I'm gonna...
Is any of this stuff that you took out, Alex?
What?
Did you take out any of this?
I took all of that.
You took all of this out? Okay. Okay, got it. Okay. I see. Okay, got it. Yeah.
And then this whole chart?
Yeah. Put that back in.
You can say that, but again, it needs to be a complete application. I mean, it just seems to me that...
It's not necessary to say.
It sort of emphasizes something that's not very important.
I see, because it's gonna be included anyway as part of the complete application. I understand. Okay, yeah, got it.
So we're gonna accept this deletion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is this your change, Alex?
Yeah.
Okay, it's fine.
This is too... Why didn't we take amendments out for any particular reason? Do you remember? Did we put something in there?
Who would've taken that out?
I don't think so.
We have eleven as term renewal revocation and amendment. So, look, it's F. Eleven F, if you remember. I think then all that stuff stayed in.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, it did stay, it stated this part.
But that language, isn't it? I think this is eleven.
Eleven E and F, yeah, which is not here anymore.
Right, which is...
It shouldn't have taken that.
Yeah, just a bit.
But is E related to the whole?
Yeah, it's, if you, eleven's term renewal revocation and amendment.
Okay.
So we're gonna take this out?
Yeah.
Or leave it in?
No, no, no. Yes, you're gonna leave it in. You're gonna take out the deletion.
Yes.
I feel better now.
So light dusting on the fence. This is in paragraph four. Three. This is not the number that we want, A, B, and C. But it's currently under four E. Three.
Yeah.
B.
Okay.
But on page eight of the thing where it says we use A, B, and C, you're gonna have to use something else other than that because we already use those letters. But this is what I'm saying for B. You can leave it in.
You have to hold on a second.
Tim, it's fine.
A long part of the northeast property line.
It's not fine because I'm not on the page yet.
Oh, we're listening, though. We're listening to Alex before you type it in.
A long part of the northeast, I'll give you this.
Oh.
A long part of the northeast property line, T-bone. The fence will be set back at least fifteen feet. And then fifteen with a possibly fifteen feet in. The existing trees between the property line and the fence shall be preserved as a natural buffer along the property line. And they were going to be... And they were going to be preserved, so, uh, that should not be a problem. Existing trees between the property line and the fence shall be preserved as a natural buffer along the property line. Existing trees removed for construction of the fence shall be minimized. The planning director shall consult with applicants and approve those trees to be removed.
Can you read this one more time, Alex, sorry?
I'll read it as many times as I like.
Thank you.
A long part of the northeast property line, T-buns. The fence will be set back at least fifteen feet, fifteen feet. Existing trees between the property line and the fence shall be preserved as a natural buffer along the property line. Existing trees removed for construction of the fence shall be minimized. The planning director shall consult with applicants and approve those trees to be removed.
Okay with me. So, I think the language is great, I think the spirit of it is excellent. I do have an issue, though, with asking the Oldfields to work with the planning director who has given them misguidance on this very issue. I would feel more comfortable if we could have him consult with the chair of the board, whoever that may be. I just feel like this is an awkward situation to ask them to go back to the planning director.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not qualified to have that conversation, so, um.
So we need.
But I understand what you're saying and we can figure out who the right person is.
I just feel like it's an awkward thing to ask the applicant to do.
Well, we can say or designate, planning director or designate. And then if they say to the planning director, we don't want to consult with you.
That makes sense.
Then the planning director will designate someone else.
That's great.
Just, just as we've done with the building inspector.
Correct, yep, okay, that's great.
But we should take a look at what they might have removed.
Yeah, someone should, sure.
So, if that's okay, I'll just give this to, uh,
This replaces the current B that's up there?
Yeah.
Right now?
Nine B. And while he's typing that, it seems to me that, uh, we say in paragraph two that the applicants are successes in interest to Robert G. Oldfield and Margaret T. Oldfield. He held this special permit under seven. And, uh, I think that the complaints that we got about their not being successes in interest, I mean, clearly they're operating the same nursery business that's been operated. And whether it's in a corporate form or whatever, it's, uh, the, the, the hux of the situation is that they're doing it. And that they are, can be considered successes in interest, so, you know, without getting legally tied up and not, it seems to me to consider.
Well, town council, I think, agrees, right?
They did.
I, I think so, I think he does.
Yeah, no, we, we went around this, we went around this.
Degrees going to have to start agreeing.
No, no, we went around this.
We did.
And around this and around this, and we ended up with language that everybody was comfortable with and there's correspondence, and so I, I think, I'm comfortable with it at this point, with council's guidance.
But I do think that this, if they're, you know, pursues this in, uh, in good faith, I mean, we're issuing it because we expect they're to get on board. And, uh, you know, make a real effort to, uh, to get along with their neighbors and to, you know, these terms are not unduly rigorous. They're terms that can be, uh, can be done, and they should be, uh, if it's meant, uh, with, uh, if not enthusiasm, with graceful acceptance. And because three years from now, we're going to, we're going to review this again, and if we get complaints and say that it's, it's just even worse than it was before, which it shouldn't be, if it's, uh, if it's done the way we set out. So, um, just a caution.
Can you, can you all just take a look at that to make sure it's? Ken? Can I say something? Can we, can we change it to removal of existing trees for construction of the fence shall be minimized?
Yeah, I just, I will done that once, but.
Sure.
Yes.
All right, I'm entertaining motions on this application.
So is the motion to approve the?
I'm not making the motion.
I'm just asking what you're looking for, is, is to approve the special permit as modified tonight?
Fine motion.
Right.
And, uh, go, go, just, you, yeah, I, I, I think that's okay. But I mean, I just hope that it, what the modification have gotten to what we have here.
Yes, I'm, we, what we just looked at was that document that you just put your hand on.
That's, that's.
And then we made some adjustments to it, but you, we all looked at it on the board.
No, no, actually, the adjustments we made already had been made.
Correct, we accepted them, yes, good point.
So, but would we?
Either accepted or rejected.
Before we sign it, we would have an opportunity to make sure that it was scribed properly?
I think that, uh, I, I think that, uh, the motion would be, uh, to, to approve what we approved tonight. So I guess we've got to, whatever he's done is the final, the final deal.
So if I may.
It's safe.
I would entertain a motion to approve the special permit and site plan approval for landscaping business two seventeen, two thirty-seven, and two seventy, Hillside Street and zero and twenty-four, Forest Street, Oldfield Family LLC, comma, owner, comma, and Joshua Oldfield, comma, Maggie Oldfield, comma, and Fair Nursery Corp., comma, applicants. As modified this evening in the public meeting, uh, public hearing. That is my, that is the motion I would entertain.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Four, zero.
Don't forget your board here.
I'm gonna need to print out.
Maggie, you have a board over there.
One more board over here.
So if, um.
Thank you.
Okay. Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Thank you.
If I can run upstairs, Josh, have a good one. I want to run upstairs real quick and print out some fresh signature pages.
Fine.
That this can get signed.
Uh, we're gonna move on now to, uh, our seven forty-five public hearing on Beachwood Lane, six eighty-three Brushhill Road, definitive subdivision modification. I have order in my, uh, in the chamber here, thank you. Do we have an applicant for this? Yes, come on up.
Sorry.
Everybody swift up the exit.
Welcome, could you identify yourself to the record and, for the record, and tell us why you're here?
Yeah, my name is Jerry Rankin, I'm owner, manager of sixty, six eight three, six eighty five Brushhill Road LLC, regarding development of Beach Hill Lane in Milton.
Okay, and we're here to discuss?
The modification of the, um, I submitted, unfortunately, I grabbed the wrong folder this evening.
We have a plan in front of us.
Plan was submitted to the building department regarding, um, the stone wall at the entryway.
All right, yes, so everybody should have a copy of that in front of them. Yes.
Memo that's at the front of the package.
Yeah, we'll get to that, I think, so we're here, we're talking about the plan at the moment, and then we'll get to the memo.
They're all clipped together, it's not clear to me.
Okay, so we have the plan, this is the plan you're speaking of, it's dated April second, two thousand and fifteen.
Correct, yes.
Okay, great.
We have, um, the initial decision, we have discussed, uh, the stone wall, we discussed with the neighbors regarding keeping the same integrity of the wall. Um, I have used pretty similar stone and some, and we've still some of the existing wall that we're actually attempting to use as well. So, um, part of the wall has already been constructed, we have put two pillars in at the end of the wall. And I met with, uh, William or Bill Clark with the planning regarding before we started it. And then, um, we heated a site visit, and then we also visited the other development, uh, from, uh, Northland, just where they're on the other street. There's, she, uh, had suggested keeping in the same framework as what they have done there. And also the, the property, I'm not sure I remember directly where across the street, the big manor across the street, is, same thing, pillars, stone wall. So, that's what we have done. And during the construction of the wall, the wall was brought back in at another angle. We're proposing just to take that out, it was built incorrectly, and just to build it, um, straight on into the existing wall that's there. Um, so that's what we're proposing to do.
And just for clarification, so this plan that I referenced at the beginning, it's dated originally April second, two thousand and fifteen, there's an amendment to this plan. I think it says update walls, but I can't read the words, but it's dated five thirty-one sixteen.
He, unfortunately, we brought the engineer out, and that may be the difference. The first day he came out and was constructed was the wall came back in on a kind of, uh, an oval or semicircle shape coming back into the wall.
Okay.
And that wasn't the way it was supposed to be, and so there was an amendment made to it, to bring the wall back into the other wall.
So can you just take a look at this and let us know, the plan we're looking at is what you're proposing?
And it's also the enlargement.
Yeah, there's an enlargement on the next page.
Yep, that's, the wall, probably about ten or twenty feet before was brought back into the wall at this, a different angle.
Mm-hmm.
And we had Bill up there, uh, I believe Tim, Tim Kern was up there as well. And also Alex was up there, so, uh, the discussion was to bring the wall straight in and, and match where they could go.
I'll get there.
And use existing.
Come on up, yeah.
And use existing, some of the existing stone from the original wall. Um, so this corner here, the other side, we did bring in new wall, which was very similar to what was, um, originally there, but we'd only, we've only served another wall that's taken down.
Okay.
So we are gonna use it, I know there's a, uh, one of the colors that we were talking about, there's a couple of red bricks, different, I don't know, I'm not even sure what type of stone it is, but it's, like, it's almost like red or purple, purple as stone. So we, we have some of that which we can use in the wall, so we're actually able to keep the same integrity of what was there.
Okay. And do you have a copy of this memo that was sent out?
Yeah, I have a copy of that.
Okay. And do you have any response to it?
Can I first, before we ask for, who's the author of the memo? There's no date on it, there's no address of neighbors.
Yours truly was, I apologize for not, I need to show member association at the top, that's why it was my.
Yeah, it just says neighbors, and it's not clear to me how many neighbors.
All right, so we'll, we'll get to that, because that's gonna be part of the public.
Okay, sure, fine, fine.
I just want to let the applicant respond to it, and then we'll clarify, but thank you for clarifying who wrote it, that's helpful. So do you have a response to the memo, I mean, I, you know, this is, you can respond after if you'd like, we can have the public come up and speak, and then you can respond whichever way you want to do it.
Which is, personally, just trying to keep the same integrity of the wall, that's all, it's just a matter of where it actually comes into the wall, I think is more the issue than anything else. Uh, I think obviously the issue of the pillars, uh, I know that the new owners on the street were, they want, I mentioned them to them about the pillars, and they were happy with the doors.
Okay.
Um, I don't really see an issue with the pillars, because right directly across the street, we have pillars. Northland Development, which had done the same thing, and they've kept the same integrity of their, their entrance, like, they have two pillars at the end of the street. Bill, I, I, you know, everything I've done, whenever there was an issue with the site, it was either Bill Clark or John Thompson. As, we've addressed every issue, um, regarding the development, we did have water runoff, we had an issue with, um, the water action group, which we've had, everything's been inspected by engineers every week, anytime there's a quarter of an inch rain, we have our own engineer coming out taking photographs of any runoff or anything like that. So we've worked, I've worked with, anytime there's been an issue, I've worked with everyone. Uh, same with Paul, um, Paul and Drew, is it, I don't know his last name, the vet.
He was, uh, the first house on the right there.
Paul, um, he want, he wanted access to his house, we gave him access and we've accommodated. We've had to make a little minor adjustment with his driveway, we've done that.
All right, why don't you step back, we'll hear from the public, and then if something for you to address, or you want to address something, you help us to do that. All right, so I assume, who wants to speak, and then we'll see if anybody else does.
Thank you, Tim Kern, six four two Brushhill Road, and I'm also president of the Neighborhood Association. And at the time, the Neighborhood Association was working with this proposal, as it was before the planning board, we had a lot of discussions about this particular issue, the, the format of this, this entryway. Um, I'd like to preface my comments by saying that, um, for the most part, the neighborhood is pleased with the development that's taken place so far. It looks like quality work, and the developer's done a, a nice job at putting it all together. We're not here to antagonize him or give him a hard time, uh, we're here to come up with a nice design that's gonna be good for Brushhill Road. Excuse me, maintain some historical characteristics that are part of the, part of the neighborhood, uh, and hopefully give him a good entrance to the, to the, to the road, to his, his development. My apologies on the memo that you referred to moments ago, uh, that was a draft, I was waiting for a number of people to get back to me before I sent it out, and it became time to send it out, so I sent it out probably a little, a little ahead of time. Our primary concern as we looked at this development a, a number of years ago was finding a way to preserve some of the characteristics along Brushhill Road. In the memo, at the end of the, back of the memo, there's a number of photographs of that stone wall as it existed before the development started. Uh, it's a very unique set of stones, very unique color, um, and, and we were striving to sort of maintain that to the best we could. Uh, without reading, uh, my memo, which I would prefer not to do, because I know it's late and everybody wants to get going. Uh, if I could just summarize it by saying, on the left-hand side, and I don't know if we have a good diagram that shows what the proposed work, um, is, that, that is before us tonight. Is there, is there a clear?
Are you talking about a, a plan view or a?
Something that is more focused, more detailed, that would probably, it's up there, yeah, that, that may be the trick. The left-hand side, um, let me just read my notes, on the right-hand side, we want to eliminate the terminal pillar, which you see there. There was no pillar there to begin with, we prefer that it be gone. Yes, there's a pillar across the street, but there are very few pillars up and down Brushhill Road, I started to count them and then I gave up. In terms of the number of pillars versus the number of driveways with no pillars. I, I would, I would say, yes, there are some, Low Estate has none. Yes, the, uh, Northland Development had, has pillars, they were there when the, the, before the development started. So we're trying to maintain the character and the look of this particular roadway and feel that the pillar should not be there. Would much prefer to see the, the stone wall just feather right into the rising hill. And on the right-hand side, while we realize that substantial amount of work has been done, we're fine with the, sort of the arc of that wall, let that go, remove the pillar and extend the wall, so it can naturally feather into the hill. So, on the left-hand side, um, where am I? Oh yeah, okay, right side, left-hand side. Extend, extend the, the existing wall a little further, uh, up the hillside, and just let it come to a natural end. That would leave a, a large space, granted, between the current driveway and the existing stone wall, which we feel is, is fine. And it would, it would allow one to be able to keep those existing stones and the existing stone wall where it is. So if you look at the photographs at the back, I think it's the first photograph on page three, the top, that's the, that's the look and feel, we're trying to preserve, those two, two diagrams there. For him to, or for the proposal to pull that stone wall in closer to the driveway, um, I think it's just gonna, it's just gonna tighten it up and not make it, not, not keep sort of the, the historical integrity that was there, and sort of keep it, make it a cramped, open look to it. So that's where I think, I think where we are. Unfortunately, a number of the, uh, neighbors who were participating in this original discussion have moved on, um, but I did, there are two others with me, and perhaps they, I don't know if they wanna speak, but, um, they would, uh, they'd probably represent the same comments that I have here. So we'd really like to see that left-hand wall stay exactly as it is, extended up a few feet.
Before you go, I'm just gonna ask if anybody has any questions here for you, just so we know if to come back up, we all set?
I don't, I don't, you, you know, having a plan would have been useful, as, as to what you want, you want, I, I don't really understand what you want. I've read your memo, I don't get it, I really don't get it.
Did you wanna show us up on the wall?
I'd be happy to show it.
Well, he's walking up, Alex, I think you were on the board when this came to the board, was there a, a landscape plan as a part of that, um, approval, or that special permit, that addressed this?
It was a sub, it was a subdivision.
Okay, just a subdivision, okay.
And it, there was something, I, I, I.
But no detail?
We don't have the subdivision.
There was nothing identified on the plan, we did have a discussion during the process, we did have a discussion about moving the wall. Um, in fact, what, the discussion was that the wall on the right-hand side had to be taken back.
Jerry, can I, can I ask you to step up to the microphone, thank you.
Um, the wall on the right-hand side had to be, part of that wall had to be removed because of the entryway for the fire department, so we.
What was agreed in the meetings was that we'd take that wall back, and what we'd do is, we'd extend, we'd put that wall over the other side, and that's what was discussed in the meetings. We'd, we'd bring and keep the same integrity of the wall. I, um, you know, we're led to work with them, but I just, I really don't understand the aspect of the, taking the pillars out. Secondly, you're talking, you say you wanna keep the same integrity of what's there, then you turn around and the second, in, in, in your other statement is you wanna bring it further up. So it either, either you wanna bring it further up, or you wanna keep the same integrity. I, I just don't understand why, because I think you're, you're really wasted. Because what we, what we have on, first of all, on the left-hand side, after the pillar, we, we have a grade differential between the trees, and we did not want to disturb any trees, because it's a sixty-foot buffer, we could not disturb any trees. So we had a grade like this, so in order to keep the integrity of the trees behind that wall, we built a small retaining wall just past the pillar, going all the way up for another thirty, forty yards. So, and, and what we did was, we used the stone that was on site, that we, that was excavated on site, and we continued to use that. And there obviously, there's been an issue with the water runoff, and that's what we're trying to, I've also not just report to the planning board, we've had to report to Clean Water Action on nearly every second week, or if not every week. We've had, you know, our engineers been out there taking photographs of all the water runoff, and we've had to make different provisions all the way through the process. And it, we've adhered to everything, but the, the wall on the left-hand side, it's easy to turn around and say, yes, you wanna extend it up, but there, there was a great differential. And what we did was, we built a retaining wall past the pillars that goes up about twenty, thirty feet.
Can you point out where the retaining wall is on this plan, please?
Yeah, see, I mean, right here, we have about, it was probably about twenty, probably thirty, maybe even forty feet.
So that stone wall that's there is, um, is actually serving as a retaining wall?
It's serving to keep the grade in, because of trees, because I, 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 I knew there was gonna be an issue with it, I brought Bill Clark, Clark down to the site, there was a couple of trees that my escalator said we should take down, I said, no, we can't. It's in the buffer zone, we can't do anything.
Jerry, can, can you grab the, the mic over there, thank you.
So what we did was, we, we built a small little retaining wall coming out up thirty, forty feet, so we didn't touch any of the trees.
Well, I dropped by the side, those are, when you say a small retaining wall, those are actually pretty large boulders, right?
Yeah, they're probably about two to three feet, some of them.
They're, they're quite a bit larger than the existing stone.
They are larger than the existing stone, yeah.
Right, that was the, the thing that I noticed when I was there, yeah, okay.
They are, they are a lot larger than the existing stone of the wall, and it's.
But they came from the site, you said?
They came from the site, they were excavated on the site, and we used the wall. Yes, everything that I found on the site, I used them to incorporate, we did the same on the other side to incorporate for the, the, the walkway. And on the right-hand side, there was a big grade differential between Paul, Paul's property and where the walkway was, so we actually did the exact same. So, we mirrored everything going up the other side, and the same thing, which is not on the plan, is the, the seat, the area for the, I call it, we call it the bus stop, for the kids in, in the neighborhood. And we have an area where you can come in and stand, I was, I was gonna, I was requested to put in a seat for the kids, and we're gonna do that, but I see in this memo, he doesn't want a seat behind a wall.
But can you point out where that area for the, waiting for the bus?
Bus stop, to be correct.
Right, right in that area, just on the curb on the right-hand side, we put in a bus stop for the kids of the neighborhood, if there's any kids come to school, then we put in a smaller bus stop.
So, i- i- so what we were trying to do is to, as I said, and if you look at the pictures that I provided in that memo, we're trying to preserve some of the character that was originally here. Granted, we not could be able to do it perfectly, and we obviously wanna work with him to see if we can do it. Yes, he had to move this stone wall back, um, but we'd prefer that he kept the arc of the wall, which he did, for the most part, so that's fine. The only thing we're doing is to just remove this square, and if he wants to let this wall just go uphill here and stop, or just bring the wall to a natural stop without any pillar, that's fine.
There's also drainage right in there.
That's, that's fine, I don't, the, the drainage, the drainage will not bother, it's just the pillar, just get rid of the pillar, that's all we wanted.
He had to excavate underneath the wall to be able to bring the wall further up, and so there's drainage right underneath there, and if that drainage is disturbed, you're gonna cause an issue with drainage.
Then, I, understood, so just take the pillar out and leave it the way it is, or just remove the concept of the pillar. You can lay, take the stone wall to right where it is, let it end right there, but just remove the concept of the pillar.
What's the next, I, I don't want you guys going back.
Okay, yeah, right, so on this side here, you can see he's got a proposed stone wall here with another pillar. Here's the existing wall. All we're suggesting is just take this existing wall and either leave it completely untouched, or just extend it up here a little bit into the rise of his hill, so it just feathers to a natural end. But this whole thing here is just, it destroys the characteristic that we're trying to preserve, both in terms of the new position of the arc and in the square pillar. So it's just leave this right where it is, it would leave open grass area in here.
Tim, you're asking us to go into the buffer area and to construct in the buffer area, which you asked us not to do.
Oh, I, as, as, as the chairman clearly points, I don't wanna get into a, a discussion with you on that.
I understand the, uh, the request, so.
Okay, we understand now.
So, thank you, and, uh, is there anybody else in the board wishes to speak? Mr. Carr?
I'm, uh, Henry Carr, and I live with my mother directly across the street from it. Um, my comment's not so much the, the stone wall, mine's just the concern about the drainage, that, um, it does seem like it's getting better, and I know it's been paved. But just in the past, there's been, the mud coming down there is just, and I just wanna be sort of reassured that after the development's all done and gone, I mean, in the summertime, we don't get much rain. So you, you say, oh, the problem's gone, but then when, you know, we get more rain, um, I just wanna be reassured that, uh, I've seen grass put up there, and there's one spot where the dirt is, that I'm assuming they're gonna put, you know, plant some more grass, so I'm just asking that we make sure that the, that we do, that the drainage is in fact solved, that we don't have any more flooding on Brushhill Road, that's just what I'd like to.
I'll ask a question from the gentleman.
Sure.
The flooding that you see, is it all the way across this area that's disturbed, or is there a particular area that it, it's more of an issue?
It really just comes straight down the driveway, and then sort of goes across the road and all the way down to Bradley Road, sometimes, in, in heavy rains.
So, the reason I ask is because, uh, if it were something which was flowing through here, for example?
I, I would say no, mostly it's just on the, the driveway where it comes through. I know there are some drains there that are temporarily have something on top of them, that's, I guess filtering the mud. But, um, I just wanna make sure that this problem gets resolved before the developer is completely, you know, says goodbye. So, that's just what I, my comment.
Okay, thank you.
We just to address that issue, just.
Jerry, we have someone else coming up to speak, and then you can, we can speak at the end, it's fine.
Keith Carlson, thirty-one Brushhill Lane, the, it may seem like a lot of the stone wall, but ultimately, over the, the years that this was in, in operation, the stone wall's the only thing we got left with. Uh, the arc on the right side was greater for easier access, fire department, and so on, and that's gotten built in. Uh, on the left, the, as Tim has said, the arc and the two posts, and the finishing of the wall, to try to stay with the character, you know, try to duplicate history, if you will, but have it finished out instead of just piles of boulders that get topped, uh, squared off in some fashion, do continue the historical value. But the posts, uh, we do have a, a problem with the posts, obviously, and would hope to get the, the finishing on both sides to be more in keeping with the traditional stone wall finish. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this? Okay. And address anything he wants to, and then we'll probably conclude that.
Well, just on the water issue, we, we're still gonna have a topco on the, on the, the road as of yet, we've still got about another inch and a quarter to the wall, and that will feed into all the drains. And Kipper brought him down to stop any runoff coming off from the sites, so that has gone in. And other than that, we've got a topco, we still have a, almost like a speed bump on the entryway to stop any, we put that in, so we stop a lot of the stuff coming out off the site. Any water that came off the site was all clean, because we had it all infiltrated all the way up, up the site. We did have an issue one day, and that's what caused an issue with Clean Water Action. And John Thompson called me, he said there's issue to, uh, to the drains, we, we, uh, he asked me to clean them, I said yes, and then he said, no, we'll clean them, and he begged. And like, that's what happened. But we've been monitoring the water for the last sixty-nine months, since, since the issue began. So, um, as far as the integrity of the wall, we just, I'm using some of the existing stone that was there, and there wasn't enough stone, obviously, to do it everywhere. I did go to J F Price in Miami to try and configure the same stone, gave him pictures, and, you know, to use very similar stone, I can't say it's the exact, but it's very similar, so.
Thank you.
Let me just, uh, ask a question. You're suggesting taking this out and using the stones in this here, right? That's your suggestion?
Yeah.
From an aesthetic point of view, having visited the site, for my.
Before you go on, are we going into deliberations? So, I probably wanna close the public hearing, so we can move on this.
Other questions? I suppose I, I have a question of, um, if you didn't build this post, would that be a, uh, I, I know you, you have built this, but if you didn't build that.
The, the one on the left is already used.
That, they're both there, I don't know.
No, but no disrespect, but if you put a pillar on one side, the pillar should be on the other side.
Okay.
That's the answer.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You know, to have a pillar on one side.
I hear you, sir.
Any other questions from the board for the applicant?
How much higher is the pillar than the, than the?
It's less than twelve inches.
Jerry, can, can you come up and speak into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Uh, it's less than twelve inches.
All right, so it looks pretty minor in this picture, but I can't tell if it's.
The, the wall is probably somewhere in the region of about twelve to fifteen inches in width, and the pillars are probably two by two.
In width, how much higher are the pillars than the wall?
The wall is up, I would say eight inches to twelve inches max, I think it's closer to eight, eight inches.
Okay, that satisfies me, thank you.
Any else?
Bless you.
Continue motion, go to the public hearing. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Okay, Cheryl.
From my site visit, I was trying to see if I took any photos, I find the scale of the walls, um, pretty different from one another. So, I am concerned about the juxtaposition of sort of the smaller stone, sort of historic wall with the bigger boulder. And so the question then becomes, what's the best way to sort of address that from a design point of view? And, you know, is it, so tying them together, as is proposed, I, I think in a sense sort of exemplifies or accent, accentuates the fact that they're different in a different time. So I am sympathetic with the view of keeping the existing one, uh, on the left, and, and, but not extending it. And, and if it's possible to bring the boulder up further, so that you can get a sense of that historic entrance, and then what's new is new beyond it. Silence.
So you, you're proposing the cross hatch wall that says existing masonry wall?
Well, well, I'm, right. What I'm suggesting is that this wall, which is going to be composed of those stones.
Right.
These are totally different in scale, in color, everything about them, they're kind of incompatible. So putting them together in that juxtaposition seems wrong to me. Uh, having them have a little break in between with some landscape in between actually probably will serve better to, to keep that integrity of that one. Now, is it necessary to have them symmetrical? I mean, this is a sort of a country road kind of appearance, so I don't really see that symmetry is important. And as far as whether there's a pier or not.
I can't, I don't know what you're asking for, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying one side.
I thought I knew, and then you said the symmetry.
So this.
No, that's because this side, this side doesn't have to be exactly the same.
Oh, you mean with having the back, okay, now I understand, okay.
Um, and then as far as whether there's, um, you know, piers or not, there's a lot going on already visually, in, in my view, because you've got the, the boulders. Now, if you didn't have the boulders coming down, which is some of the other properties don't, but that do have piers, like Milton Mews don't have a kind of slope and boulders coming down also, so, you know, if you sort of, uh, I thought the last time we talked about this, we talked about having some photographs of the, as built conditions, so we can sort of see it better.
We had them last week, last meeting.
Oh, we did, okay, so do we have some too?
Do you still have those pictures?
We had photos last meeting, I don't know.
I think we did, didn't we? Do you remember that, Alex, didn't we pull up pictures?
We had the, um, I think it was the Google.
Go on, on street view, I can bring up the street view.
I think we had. Sadly, you're gonna have photos. I don't think it's the current construction, right? No.
It's the original.
It's pretty significantly different than that now.
Yep. I mean, I've got the photos that are in the memo and that's.
Do we have them in color? I mean, the actual photos? Yeah, can we pull those?
There they are.
Oh, they're there, yeah.
No, but it doesn't show the boulders.
Doesn't show the continuation, yeah.
And the pillars.
Well, that's what I was trying to figure out. One of those has a pillar in it. The last one?
Ugh, come on, sorry.
So this is exactly what I was trying to figure out.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get back to that, don't worry.
So is this the pillar in question right here? I think it is, yeah.
Yes, that's the pillar.
Do you have the other side too, Tim?
Oh, yeah, there it is. So the existing wall then is here? Is this what we're seeing as the existing wall?
That's about the end of it, right there. No, I think on the other side of the bush, about right there where you just were.
And then the boulders start somewhere over here?
You can see them right there.
This?
Yeah.
I mean, people think that's a preferable visual outcome.
If you bring the inside wall up further, you're gonna interfere with the trees in front entryway.
So you're suggesting, Cheryl, just keep this gap? Here.
With or without the wall, I can't tell.
You've probably got about a five foot differential between the roadway and the base of the tree. So we tried to keep the slope about a three to one that doesn't interfere with it. That's why we, after the pillars, we used whatever boulders that were on site, we used them to bring it further.
Is that the current condition?
That's, yeah, yeah, it is.
There aren't more boulders than that, though?
No, well, it goes up probably just probably another, like I said, it's from the pillar up. The boulders don't even touch onto the pillar. It's, there's probably a small gap between the pillar and the boulder. And then it's brought up probably another ten feet from what you can see. You'll see the drainage, one of the drainage and pipe and just above there, it probably comes up to that.
But that wall is not any higher than that now?
No.
So your intent is to, to do what with this slope around?
Well, it's sloped back in at about a three to one grade, back into the.
And you're going to put grass or landscape or?
Yeah, there's mulch there right now at the moment. And I just try to contain any runoff from that area. So we're gonna have probably grass here.
So, I mean, I think that it looks better as proposed in the plan than leaving a five foot swath of grass with a disconnected wall.
But you were specific in your approvals that that area was not, that fifty foot buffer was not supposed to be touched. Landscape, and that was part of the request from the, from the residents of the area.
Yes, but we specifically are also on crossing aesthetics and stone walls, so we recognize that we definitely dealt with the changes before.
Okay, Alex, anything else from you?
Well, I, I was out there, it really does, this, there's not much wall there. And it ends quite abruptly. And there was a question of whether or not it had been buried. And the developer assured me that it had been buried. And he said, anyone who doubts this can come in and dig down and, and can see that there's nothing under the, what's that?
What, where are these stones from?
That was the beginning of the work, that's, that's not the face.
Those stones came from on-site somewhere?
Yeah, we brought them from our site. But it's the exact same stone as the other side. So if you take a look at the other side of the picture, I mean, the other side of the wall fits in, I think, pretty similar. There's no complaints on the other side. So we see the stone wall here compared to the existing, there's very little difference between what I, what I brought in, except the fact that the new wall's gonna weigh pretty similar to that.
I'd like to suggest we do a site visit.
To, okay, I'm just curious, what's the, what's the end result here?
Then, because we have concerned neighbors about the conditions of the walls. We're going from photographs and drawings that.
Well, you've done a site visit, I've done a site visit, Alex has done a site visit.
I haven't.
So I'm just curious what the end result is, because we've all, I live down the street, I see every single day. Alex has been there on-site with both the applicant and the neighbors. So, you know, I wanna, I wanna be sensitive to both the applicant and the fact that we have an increasingly busy agenda, so.
My, my concern is I don't think that this drawing represents an as-built condition or a proposed condition. And not, I doubt the accuracy of the location of the walls. And it's very hard to tell in that photograph where the walls are. So I believe that we're, we're not making decisions with all the information if we're going based on this drawing and that photograph. And that's why I suggest a site visit.
Will you gain anything from a site visit?
Well, it's always pleasant to go up Brush Hill Road.
I'd like to go there shortly.
You might still have lunch tonight.
So what, what is, what are your, what are your views as a resident of the area?
I am inclined to, I like the wall that's been built. I don't really care one way or the other about the piers. I, I'm mostly excited about seeing it resolved.
The piers have been built, that's the, I mean, they're fairly significant piers.
They are. You know, I think at this point, the entire, I'm so thrilled that so many of the trees were preserved on-site as part of this development, but ultimately, you know, it's a very new look up there. Those are obviously new homes. I think it doesn't, I think the existing wall that's been built on the right side does a nice job of trying to replicate the walls that are on the street. The pier doesn't offend me. But I'm, I'm just one person, and I'd like to see the issue resolved. Because this has been dug up for a long time and I think everybody, including, I think both sides want the issue resolved one way or the other.
I think that we've got to remember that this is a subdivision, not a special permit. And that our authority in doing a subdivision is not an aesthetic one. It's basically, I mean, the rules and regulations basically tell us about how we can do a street. And often when there's a retaining wall, we say this should be faced with stone rather than just concrete. But we don't, in a subdivision, we never have approached this level of detail.
And how did they get on our agenda tonight as a public hearing?
What we insisted on it.
Because if the wall doesn't appear on the plan, and so they had to amend the plan to show the wall. And what appears on the plan is what they want to build, what the developer wants to build. And the neighborhood says, well, we don't, we'd like it to be different. We have a different aesthetic judgment from you, Mr. Developer, and we've lived here and, but not all the neighborhood. I mean, we haven't heard, we've heard two people say they don't like the wall. But I haven't detected a ground spell of opinion, like a petition signed by a hundred neighborhood residents saying, this is what we want. So we have two people and one person.
Well, if we're being asked to make a judgment about whether we think this, this plan is a good idea, which I think we are, and we're, and we've had some residents who have expressed concern, then I think we do need to offer our recommendation. So whether we normally do for a subdivision or not, it's on our agenda, we've been asked to make a decision about.
So all I'm asking from you is what, what is a site visit going to gain for you? Because it's not going to gain much for me and if we can resolve it tonight, I'd like to resolve it tonight. If you don't think we can resolve it tonight, then you should probably make a motion to continue.
Well, the nice thing is that it's a subdivision. And so a subdivision doesn't require four votes, it requires three votes. So that.
Make a motion then.
No, well, I.
The public hearing is closed, I really shouldn't, I'm sorry. If I do it, I've gotta do it all night, so I gotta, I gotta stick to the rule.
There's a rule of the point that I need to make a comment on in terms of what Alex is commenting.
Sorry. Okay, so where do we want to go? I need someone to make a motion so we can move on, one way or the other.
I want to make a motion to accept the modification on the wall as proposed in the application dated July fifth, two thousand and sixteen.
Do I have a second?
I would think.
Okay, fair enough.
All right, I'll, I'll second that, but they are lively, they have a discussion.
You do, yes. All right, we have a motion and a seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Can you repeat the motion again?
It's to accept the application for the, for the wall.
I would like to make a comment that I, I think this is unacceptable material to be making these decisions on. And I, and I think in the future that we should have a greater expectation of what's going to be required for us to render a decision on something like this. Because we're actually making an opinion about something that's already been built for the most part. So we're asking, we're being asked to accept something that we weren't even allowed really to make an opinion about before it was built.
But I think.
But in terms of as a judgment, as someone who understands drawings and understands what needs to be submitted, there's no section through here, there's no topography on here, the photographs are hard to read. So I think making a decision based on this information, in my opinion, is wrong.
April, you have something to say?
Well, I just want to clarify that was this another applicant that was given some advice from our planning director on the wall? Because it's my understanding that he was. To proceed with the pillars.
But he's testified that he was out there with both the planning director and neighborhood and represented the board. You, Alex?
Well, I think that the existing wall is inadequate, in my view, to really frame that corner. It just ends right sort of at the white, white post. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's an aesthetically pleasing situation. If the stones in that wall are all reused, prominently reused, prominently reused, and the new wall facing out, I, I can, and what it would be, as shown by the plan, you would, it curves in quite, then you'd have to deconstruct it and reconstruct it. And that's what I would anticipate happening and having, and in fact, I think that we can specify that, that they reconstruct the wall in the new location. And with that, I think that it will have a time honored appearance. And I can, I can go for it.
Well, one thing that's missing here is that when we were talking to this planning board about this issue as this development was before, this was not in distress. This is that point we drove home. And to say that you can't address it now, I recognize that it was, wording was not put in the subdivision requirements. That's why we're here. The request that we made to the planning board to address this early on was not put in the, in the document. All we're doing is asking for the original concepts to be restored as the neighborhood wished them to be.
I don't, I was here and I just don't recall that. And I wrote, I wrote this decision and we discussed it. And you were here when we voted it and you had a full opportunity for years, years, to make a point that you don't think that what was said at the original hearing was adequately dealt with in the decision. But, you know, you were talking, I don't see the neighborhood here, I see you.
This is the summer months, half the people have gone and has.
That's always the way it is.
Yes, it is. Alex, if I can make a suggestion, if you want, there's one member of the board who's not happy if you want to make a site visit. I would suggest make a site visit and make a decision that day, not carry on and waste of time. It's, it's a wall, it's, it's.
We're trying to bring this to a resolution tonight.
You almost got three votes, you only need three out of four. You got two, we're waiting for the third.
I just want, I want some direction for the board. We've had the discussion period, there's a motion, is that gonna be?
The developers prepared to wait two weeks, let's, let's go and.
Alex, no, I didn't, no, I didn't say two weeks, I don't have two weeks to wait on. I've already waited six weeks on it, we started construction on it. In my own opinion, I think it's absolutely ridiculous. But I will, there's one member of your board who's not a hundred percent happy with it. I don't mind making the site visit with you, but you have to make a decision at the site, because this.
But the board can't, the problem is the board can't do that.
Without going, without going to the site and posting it.
It's, I have made every attempt to make this, you know.
All right, we're, we're way out of order, so going back to the board here, so we can move this thing. We have a motion, it's been seconded, do we want further discussion? Do you want to amend the motion?
I, I wanted to make a comment that I thought Alex's representation is what the applicant was representing, that the materials from that original wall would be used. We could represent, we could change the motion to say prominently reused on the exterior surface of the wall. But that was my understanding of what we would be.
So you want to change your motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the applicant for Flores to modify the site, the subdivision, dated July fifth, two thousand and sixteen, with the condition, I expect Alex will write this, that the existing wall will be reused and that the existing stones, in order to preserve the historical character of the wall, the existing stones will be used on the exterior surface of the wall to the extent feasible.
What about the arc of the wall?
As is proposed, it's proposed as the plan.
Okay, I'd second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? One, Cheryl. Vote is three, one, two, accept the plan. With, with the modification as stated, yes. Okay, moving on to eight o'clock.
Thank you.
Would Julia have that, that condition?
Julia's got it.
Okay, I gotta make sure that's exactly right.
Two things before we move on to the next public hearing. Alex, we can, or someone, we can talk online as to what we need from the applicant in terms of plans or signatures or forms, you know.
Of what?
I'm.
Of what we just did? Yeah.
Okay.
We're gonna, we'll write a little, we'll write a little subdivision decision.
Um, and I just wanted to, well, first of all, I have-
These plans were attached to the application, correct?
Um, but I mean, like, do we need, like, Mylar plans to come in?
I think so, not on a modification, but uh... We're looking.
I think that, I think that there should be a-
For Mylar? Okay.
Um, I have signature sheets.
You'll have to speak to the application.
I have signature sheets for the special permit for Thayer Nursery that was just approved. Um, and I just wanted to note about that, uh, public hearing, Cheryl missed the previous um, hearing, but before the meeting, signed a form pursuant to the muller rule stating that she watched an official video recording of the missed hearing, um, so that's part of the record. She's all set on that.
Thank you.
Before you open the next hearing-
Yes.
I have a, I am sitting this one out-
Okay.
As a private citizen, citizens, excuse me, with no financial interest in the project, I was actively engaged in this original approval, and therefore I believe I have a conflict, so I'm gonna leave her.
Okay. So with that in mind, we're going with your testimony on this tonight, but we will not be, uh, I'd say, no, we're okay. We can do it through. Okay, yep, we're all set.
But we may not.
We may not, but we can.
We could.
We could.
If we will then.
We will. All right, we're moving on. Eight o'clock, public hearing. We're not that late. Uh, for Novara, 565 Adams Street, site plan modification. Uh, thank you for your patience.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello. You are recognized.
I'm Marionne Kettrick, um, representing Falcone, uh, as well as the current restaurant tenants, uh, at Novara. And we're here tonight to request a modification of the site plan approvals relating to the allowed seating in the patio area of the restaurant. We're not requesting any increase in allowed seating, but merely requesting that more seats, up to 44 seats, be allowed in the outdoor patio area when it's in use, and that a proportionate number of seats not being used indoors when that occurs. Um, we have given you a plan so that you can see what the seating looks like with 44 seats outside and a reduced number of seats inside, and that plan you have up on the screen. Um, I have Vance Welch here tonight, and we're happy to answer questions about this application. Vance has met, met with the neighbors who live directly to the rear, the butters who are closest to this location. So with your permission, I'd like to ask Vance to report on that meeting. And basically, the summary of it is that there, there has been no problem with noise from the patio, which was a concern at the time that we did the site plan approval. Um, the neighbors have not experienced any problems and have no objection to our application. Anything else you want to add? I just said everything. I'm sorry.
Well, it's consistent with the conversation we had with the, um, butters that are on that side of the street.
I have a question on the plan that you've submitted. Can you show us where the existing seating is today, where the existing chairs outside are on the apartment behind us? Can you just show us where the additional seats are as opposed to the existing?
Uh, there are.
You can say, you can-
You carry this so that you can-
Okay.
Move that down. See if it's a little closer seated.
I, I wanna, I wanna have it so that, this is all the patio seating here. If I kind of move it, it becomes, I mean, I can make it smaller?
No, I thought it was, no, it's fine. I thought the other side was patio. Yeah, that's the indoor, so you can make it this bigger.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, we reduce the seating inside.
I want to see where the, where are the existing seats outside?
Outside along this, along the fence here.
I understand. So you're, these are the seats you're proposing.
Well, the-
What's out there today?
These are the seats that we're proposing.
What's out there now?
The-
You have 20 seats out there now?
In the front-
Where are the 20 seats?
In the forward part of the patio.
Can you show me where, like, which ones aren't there today?
Uh, probably, right.
So you're essentially adding tables in between. So you have five, four tops out there now?
That's where-
You have five, four tops out there now? Okay.
Is that a new fire pit?
Relatively, yeah.
Yep. Relative means it's there now?
It's there now.
And is that seating plan representative of less seats, um, so that your total capacity remains at 160, the interior plan? So is that a constant, or you, you take tables away on the inside when you're open outside?
Well, it kind of vacillates because of the need. In the summer months, when it's quieter, there's more interest in seating outside.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about logistics, though, of removing tables inside during the summer and then putting them back out in the winter.
The way that we design the restaurant is it's pretty mobile. Uh, we have banquettes that are on wheels, so we just reduce the seating. It's not, it's very, it's not difficult at all.
So when you have the 40, what did you say, 44? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Where do you remove the seating inside, or where do you add it back when you don't have it?
It's currently actually removed on the inside.
So it will be removed. It won't be just not seated?
It's removed.
Then you have the 44 chairs outside.
It's, we don't, we don't have, uh, this is consistent with the way the dining room looks.
So your intent is to, um, in the winter months, is to keep the same seating inside that this plan shows, or you would bring tables back out on the floor? I'm just trying to understand the logistics.
We can expand, we can, we can use, you can put more seats in the dining room by reconfiguring it.
So are there 160 seats shown in this plan?
There is.
And there's not more than that?
Nope.
Okay, so I think we're answering the same question. This, they're not, the tables that are gonna be removed for the outdoor seating are removed already on this plan. So in the winter, you would expect the dining room to have additional seats than what's shown here?
Yep.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
Do we have a talk of that plan, the original one with 160 seats inside?
That is, that was on the original site plan, correct? Did we have a seating plan?
We had a preliminary seating plan. We might have had a more complete seating plan later on when we get our liquor license. I do, the capacity was 160. But when we came for our site plan approval, we didn't have, we did show you a plan, but it was preliminary. I don't know how many seats were shown on that plan, but, but it's in the, your materials. You'll have it in the file, whatever that was. It, it is important to understand, though, that all of the seating in this restaurant, except for the fact that you're limited to a certain number of seats at the bar, that's absolutely set, not only in this site plan permit, but also in the liquor license. It's all movable. So the restaurant, on a given night, um, taking this, we're showing you a plan to show you how we, we have arranged, it's been arranged to have fewer seats inside when there are more seats outside, which is actually, will be the plan if you approve this. But the restaurant can move those tables around in a different configuration.
Sure, yeah.
So I don't, I want you to understand that we're giving you a site plan, but we're asking you to approve the precise location of each seat.
I'm sure.
But we are asking you to approve a capacity of 44 seats outside and the, and a proportionate fewer number of seats inside, so that there's a total number of seats of 160.
I just want to understand the logistics because, you know, we wouldn't want the capacity increased, right?
Absolutely. Well, they cannot, not only here, but in the special permit and liquor license. That's all referenced.
And, uh, since I wasn't on the board when this was approved, uh, I, I don't know, is there a hours limitation on the outdoor seating?
There is a different, um, there are different hours for the outdoors, uh, for the liquor service outdoors. It's a little earlier that you have to stop serving at 10 o'clock, and that's in the liquor license.
But people can-
Liquor service is stopped at 10. Um, it's in the, I, I can look it up for you. Maybe, do you have another question? Well, I'm-
Oh, it's, uh, I, yeah, I just want to understand because, uh, you know, doubling the capacity there, um, it, it may change the noise situation, so.
It is.
And sometimes on other restaurants, um, you know, because of that, they, you know, the outdoor space closes before the indoor, just, you know, for that purpose. Because you have the doors open from what I read, so you have not just the outdoor seating, but the in, the interior restaurant sort of, um, continuity between the inside and outside, so, um, because we, we did receive some correspondence, uh, from some neighbors. And there was some discussion about entertainment, and then if those doors are open and, and there's, um, music of some sort, I mean, have, has that, have you had live entertainment on the patio and, or inside, and are the doors open to the outside when the live entertainment is inside?
We haven't had live entertainment, but we have music that plays outside.
Okay, so you're, um-
We have speakers out there.
Okay, you have speakers out there.
But, but the entertainment, whether it's, um, recorded or live, if, if there were to be live entertainment, is limited by the language in the, both the entertainment license and the builder's license.
And the entertainment looks-
And it states that it cannot be disturbing, disturbing to neighbors. So I guess what I could say to you is, were there to be a problem with noise escaping and causing a problem with neighbors, then that would be brought to the attention of the restaurant, and the noise would have to be mitigated.
So you haven't had any complaints about the, about music?
No, and we haven't, they haven't had live entertainment so far, but we haven't, well, I don't believe there have been any noise complaints. That's not to say that people might not anticipate there could be a problem with the doors open. Um, and so that's why the licenses are written that way, so that if there is a problem, there's the ability to regulate the noise. Um, and the restaurant intends to comply with that, but we, you know, if there's a problem, we need to hear about it from the neighbors.
Thank you.
Is a fire pit on the original, um, site plan approval?
Nope. At, the fire pit requires, um, approval from the fire department, basically, and plumbing license, because you, because there's a, um, gas line that runs into the fire pit. It wasn't on the site plan. I don't even know if it was even contemplated at that point.
Okay. Anything else before I go to the public?
Did you find the hours?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
It says in the vitler's license that, uh, last call for liquor service on the patio is 10:00 P.M., last call for liquor service inside is 11:00 P.M., and the last dinner orders will be taken by 10:00 P.M., whether you're inside or outside.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
What about people milling around outside with a drink and not sitting?
Do you let them do that?
We don't really let them do that, 'cause we use those people, we use the seats for diners. It's a restaurant.
There's no standing room out there?
Uh, currently, no.
Is there standing room behind the bar?
Uh, there's, I mean, you can stand around-
You're not required to stay, to be seated at the bar, correct?
Um, the, I mean, it's, I don't-
You know, you can grab a drink and stand behind the bar right here.
Yeah, but it's-
When your capacity allows your standing, I would have seen at the bar, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. Yeah, right.
But you, you can only serve, you can serve no more than two drinks without service of food, so people aren't allowed to just sit around and drink, stand around and drink in the restaurant.
Right, okay, okay. All right, I'm gonna let the public?
I would think so.
All right, could you step back, please, and allow the public your chairs? So anyone from the public that would like to speak to this application?
Are you gonna do the neighbor first? The letter?
Uh, that's gonna be included, absolutely, in this. Do you want me to do that first? I'm happy to.
You do that first.
So Tim, there were some letters that were received. I know one in particular wanted to be read into the records. Do you have that?
Which one wanted to be read into the record?
Your wife, Elena, talk?
Oh, I don't know about that one. I know I, I was told there was a letter from, um, I can't remember her last name, but her first name was Natalie. No?
I don't, I don't recall.
Do you have a letter?
I think I printed it. Let me just look.
We'll look for it. If you want to come up, we'll, I know I have it, so if you want to come up, I can read it in.
Okay.
I, I will read in. I don't know about the other one, but I have-
She sent you pictures, and she mentions the-
Okay, I might have that.
I have, I have those photos. Um, I don't, I don't have the email on me. I don't, I don't recall that.
All right, I'll read it in. Go ahead. I'll read it in for you. I know where it is.
Okay, Suzanne Brown, 566 Adams Street. Um, I'm at the corner, directly across from their parking lot, and their liquor license does state what Marionne says, but they can actually stay on the patio till midnight. Um, I have a picture here from their website showing 24 people seated, eating, and you can have it. That's not including the tables that were pushed out. That rendering right there has tables right inside the door that they push out, and it's shown here in the picture. But there's 24. His license is for 20. Nobody enforces it. Nobody walks around. Nobody cares. Okay? In his original plan, I think there was 36 or 38 that they proposed to this board, and this board gave them 20. So I don't have any idea why now all of a sudden we're gonna go to 44. I understand his business is down, and I'm sorry his business is down, but to even ask for more than what was originally asked for is ludicrous. So now, if you say 44, how do I know there's not gonna be 50? Because he doesn't follow what it is now. Okay? And as far as the conditions you people put in place, and I'm sorry you weren't here, uh, there is a smoking, um, element that you put over at Abbey Park. They're in front of the building, and there's no sign saying there's no smoking in front of the building, or we are there designated smoking areas. There's no enforcement. You make these rules, and nobody enforces them. Okay? In front of my house now has become a loading zone for his restaurant. Okay, that's Adams Street. Okay? Here's furniture being delivered to his restaurant. The trucks that are allowed to go in-
Suzanne, do you mind if I pass over that?
Okay, we can all. The trucks that are allowed to go into his parking lot and make deliveries are less than 10 wheels. This is not less than 10 wheels. The enforcement is not there. You can make any rule you want, and now he's asking for more capacity, but yet there's no enforcement. So when you say 44, how do we know it's not 50? And you also asked him for a letter from the fire department. Did you get that?
Mm-hmm, we do have that.
And there's two forms of EGRs?
I'll find it for you, but there, I, I'll find the letter. I have it here somewhere.
Because now this 10's erected. Um, as it looks right now, that patio, those seating on the right-hand side, he still has the seating up above in the bottom by your head. That's, it's not a true rendering. That's what he wishes it is, but he has those seats. This picture's right there. He's using it now. Oh, and the hours, the, you know, the hours, you know, I already asked about the liquor license, and the reason why they're here is they have to amend their liquor license. And I'm not sure if they have to amend their liquor license when they don't have the patio, or they do, but to increase the size of the patio and capacity of serving, they have to go in front of the ABC, and it's in record. It's not just a, we're gonna ship people. So, um, and the hours, I asked Amory Fagan today, can, can it shut down? You know, can we put a limit, you know, at 11:00? Last food order is 10:00 o'clock, last service supposedly at the patio is 10:00 o'clock, so why do people have to stay out there till midnight? Okay? And I've been spoken to by various people that they go out there for drinks by the fire pit, and that's not what the rule says. You know, we have to live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, on the enforcement issue, just to comment, um, you know, generally, this board hears about it all the time. There's nothing we can do to enforce it, um, but we have an inspectional services department. Pictures will help with that.
You made the rules.
Well, I know we made the rules.
You made the rules, but yet they're not following them, so now you're gonna make another rule.
Okay. Um, I have a couple of letters to read in. Um, one is from Nancy and Edward DeRocco. I think this is the one you were asking about. So this is from Nancy and Edward DeRocco, 9 Church Street in Milton. Dear Planning Board members, due to our vacation schedule, we will not be able to make it to the meeting on Thursday night, but wanted to give you our experience of living directly across the street from the Novara organization. Last year, we attended many of the planning board's meetings and voiced our concerns about the size and scope of this project in our little neighborhood. Every issue that was a concern for the neighborhood is a daily occurrence for us. They have not followed the regulations that the planning board set up to grant them their zoning and permits. They have absolutely no regard for their neighbors. We have personally spoken to them but have ignored our concerns. Here is a list of our grievances. One, delivery trucks, constant delivery of goods on Church Street, making it impossible to get out of our driveways and blocking street. Early morning deliveries before 7:00 a.m., it's very noisy. Many calls to police. Have spoken to truck drivers. They had no idea about the loading zone, or the loading zone is unavailable due to cars parked in the spaces, lack of enforcement. Number two, trash has been a huge problem. Numerous calls to Board of Health due to overflowing trash. Number three, employee parking. The employees park up and down the street, having no idea about the employee parking areas. Number four, smoking. Employees hanging out and patrons in the parking lot smoking. Where is the smoking section near Abbey Park? Never initiated. Valet, excuse me, number five, valet is now located on Church Street. Why did this happen? Too much congestion. Number six, entertainment. Having singers and music without an entertainment license, please, so entitled, they do whatever they want. Number seven, lighting. Lighting on signs was to be turned off 15 minutes after closing. It's lit up until 1:30 to 2:00 in the morning. Eight, patio will bring more noise to the neighborhood. And then it goes on to say they do whatever they want and break the rules. In regards to this matter, they should not be given any consideration to the idea of expansion until they follow rules they have and be a good neighbor. We have sent pictures on a separate email. And, Tim said you have those pictures for the record?
Uh, I, are these, are these the ones?
I don't have them on this email.
These are the ones that you received earlier this week?
Yes. So make sure those go into the record with that letter. I have a second letter that was written to the East Milton Neighborhood Association and submitted to me by Cindy Christensen, who's one of the officers of that organization. Dear Cindy, I am definitely, excuse me, I definitely am against the request by Novara for extra seating capacity. It is bad enough that because of Novara, parking has been curtailed on Adams Street and merchants are losing business. I have written to the Board of Selectmen regarding this item and they turned my letter over to Mr. Clark. I am also against issuing a liquor license to Lombardi Associates, DBA The Plate. There are three restaurants on Adams Street with liquor licenses, Novara, Abbey Park, and Mr. Chan, who has requested a license or one has already been issued. These restaurants are within five minutes, walking distance from residents on Franklin Street. If one is issued to Lombardi Associates, that goes on to Lombardi Associates, so I'm going to not read that in for the purposes of this hearing. According to a piece in the Boston Globe, Milton has 12 liquor licenses, I am sending you copies of my letters regarding this subject. Just thought I would let you know my feeling on the above subjects with all the drunken driving accidents issuing so many licenses, not only here but all over the state will only lead to more accidents, from Natalie Foltz. And again, that was submitted by Cindy Christensen on her behalf.
What was her conclusion? What was?
Ms. Foltz was suggesting that she is against the extra seating capacity.
Because of noise and?
Essentially because of the merchants losing business due to the extra parking. Okay, those are the only letters I have. Tim, you don't have anything else? I do also have a quick letter from Joe Prondak. This is to Tim Swirinski. Hi, Tim, please see the comments below and forward to the Planning Board. Number one, at the request of Attorney McHettrick, Fire Chief Grant and I have reviewed the egress capacity and plan for Novara. The building can safely accommodate 280-plus persons, therefore, increasing the occupant load of the patio to 40 patrons while maintaining the overall maximum capacity at 160 persons poses no safety concern. Number two, Anne Marie Fagan and I had a lengthy meeting with Vance Welsh relative to delivery trucks. This appears to be an issue best dealt with by the Traffic Commission. There are so many variables involved with deliveries at this and all of the venues, it seems a significant study will be needed to develop a solution. Number three, to date, I have had no complaints about dumpsters, the Health Department may have. Number four, from the Starbucks parking lot, I noticed that two tents have been erected on the patio. These should be looked at by the Planning Board to determine if this is a significant change to the site plan approval. If they are allowed to remain, these may, depending on size, require additional building permitting and are of particular concern with respect to the need for fire sprinkler protection which confines, excuse me, within the confines of these tents. And number five, it has been noticed that Novara is routinely placing a sandwich board type sign on the public sidewalk, advertising open for lunch. That would require at minimum approval by the Boards of Selectmen. This type of sign placed on the public way is not clearly addressed in the sign regulations of the zoning bylaw. Thank you, Joe Prondak, Milton Building Commissioner.
There's also, in the materials I just gave out earlier in the meeting, I don't know if I forwarded this via email, but it's an email that I got from Carolyn Consella, the Health Director, I'm here in town, regarding dumpster complaints. And I also included, I had asked her for a record of dumpster complaints that her department had responded to, there were three in the packet that she sent me, and I don't know if you want me to read this email, or.
You said it's in our packet?
Oh, we have it in our packet?
Yeah, it's what I gave out tonight.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't see that below, I do see that now.
This is correspondence I had with Carolyn. I sent this email to Anne Marie about those pictures. Barbara Martin asked me for complaint records for Novara about three weeks ago, I sent it to her, if you can ask her to forward to you, those are the records that I was just referring to. Vance has been very willing to work with the Board of Health and increased his waste disposal to four times a week. See below my response to Anne Marie, thanks. Now here's that response. Hi, Anne Marie, I inspected Novara, and the dumpster and area around the dumpster looks very tidy, dumpster is only half full and secure. The picture sent are old pictures, and when I showed it to Vance, it was noted that the sign from LA Parking that is leaning up against the dumpster has not been there for weeks. I called Troop Waste and Recycling, and Novara is having pickups four times a week on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday. Last month, the pickups were increased from three to four times a week. Vance also said he has hired a full-time groundskeeper to make sure the dumpster, the area around the dumpster, and the parking lot is clean. And that's the end of that email.
And that's from Carolyn Consella. There are several, just so everyone knows, there are several, there were three dumpster complaints attached to that. One is, two of them are dated in January of 16 and one in May, and they're all dealing with dumpsters overflowing.
What is the, the dates of investigation, observation on the main fifth one?
So the first one is January 11th, the second one is January 20th, and the third one is May 5th.
Okay, read what it, read what it says, dates of investigation, observations.
That photocopy is not very clear, I can't read it.
What does it say?
I, I'd have to go and look at the original to figure that one out, unfortunately.
Okay. Questions?
Does the applicant want to respond to any of these?
Yes, that's a good, that's a good question. All right, let the applicant respond, thank you, Cheryl.
And just relative, relative to another point that Joe made, those, the tents that he referred to, actually, you can, you can see them.
The tents or the umbrellas?
Okay, I'm gonna take these in reverse order.
All right, so let's put the applicant's memo. Yep.
Which we received as well. The only unexpected comment was the one about the tents, which I would, I call sun shades or sun tents. They look like umbrellas, but they're actually on, they're the kind you can rent, and they have little feet on them, so they, they are placed over a table. And there are tents in the patio. Until yesterday, we were not aware that there might be an issue with those. That issue has now been raised by Joe Prondak, it has not been answered by Joe Prondak. I sent him some additional research this morning, based on fire protection regulations, state law, and a case, a hearing, determination about the fact that, you know, a large tent in Easton, you know, at a college, the determination was that there was no requirement that there be a sprinkler system in the tent for various reasons. And I think other, other tent rental companies and so forth are also familiar with that case. That's not to say he's not right, I just don't know. He's talking about the building code, both the building code and fire regulations control whether you need a sprinkler, but that's an important point, because even, setting aside the question of whether the tent is a structure that requires a permit or might even require a site plan approval, that hasn't been determined yet, but if it does, they're either gone or we'll come back for site plan, whatever we have to do. But, and as far as fire protection goes, if those structures require a sprinkler, then it's, in my view, not practical to have them at all. And, and the tent rental company has provided information, which I can give you, indicating that the tent material is fire retardant material. In the Easton case that I'm referencing, in the Easton decision, the requirements were that there be no open flames under the tent and that then be, that the material be fire retardant, that was a much, much larger tent than these little structures. But this is an issue we just didn't know about, so.
It's not located over the fire pit, is it?
No. And, but, you know, if it's an issue, it's an issue. I just don't have the answer for you tonight, so.
Did you say you spoke with Chief Grant?
Yes, spoke with Chief Grant, and I spoke with the Building Commissioner more than, you know, two weeks ago, asked him to follow up with something in writing, they both said that there was no problem with increasing seating out in the patio, but the egress issues had been, were adequate, and because the capacity wasn't being changed, they had no issue with that. This issue only came up yesterday, so I didn't know about it. Now, the other issues referenced, on the temporary sandwich board sign saying that they're open for lunch, we do now have a permit for that sign, because after I spoke to Joe yesterday, I went to the Town Administrator who grants permits for temporary signs on sidewalks, and she has granted a permit. It's important to understand that temporary signs don't require permits. The reason the sandwich board signs do in these business districts is that they don't have front yards, there's no private, there's no area to place a sign on private property. So if you put out a sandwich board, you're putting it on the sidewalk, the Board of Selectmen, or they've actually delegated it to the Town Administrator, has to approve such a sign. So that's correct, and we did get the permit for that, and that's a temporary sign, can only be up for 45 days.
How about the lighting on the sign, the sign lighting? Because I do remember having a suggestion about that from Selectmen as representative of this board.
Yeah, there's, we have a sign approval, and it, and if it has times when the signs have to be turned off, they should be observed. Best I can say is that you need to check that and make sure that the sign is being turned off, if the sign approval says that it has to be turned off at a certain time. I don't.
But when it's closing, if it's 15 minutes after closing, and you're, what time is closing?
Midnight, well, it's after you clean up, so it's a little after midnight.
But the, if it's, it doesn't mean when the last person whose staff leaves, it would be when it closes, right? Because the concern that I expressed at that time with the Board of Selectmen was it would be visible to residential neighbors at a later hour, and not that it, by itself is going to be a large amount of light, but in the aggregate, you know, these things can add up in that kind of district, so.
I remember that discussion, and I just don't have the permit in front of me, so I can't tell you what the wording is, but I'm sure that if you brought it up, that it was addressed.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And we, so we will have to tell you that we will make sure the sign is turned off when it's supposed to be, and thank you for the further clarification as to what that might mean. I also wanted to address the trash issue and also the delivery issue. These are both often problems with restaurants, they have to be watched. Those are the three complaints that had been received. I don't know, January was so early, the restaurant had just opened, I think there was a huge amount of cardboard boxes and things being brought in at that time, so there was a lot of buildup of trash. In May, when that complaint was received, is when the restaurant increased its trash pickups. And the picture that you have is about three weeks old, so that was, it was at that time that Vance Welch hired an employee to routine, you know, come in every day in the morning to inspect the whole area, to water the trees and plants, and to make sure that the trash area is completely organized and clean and that there's no problem with it. So that's a new thing, but I do believe that since that has, since that person's been in place especially, it has looked very good around the exterior of the restaurant. The delivery issue has evolved, it has been problematic, no question about it. People were pulling up smaller trucks on Church Street, which they're not supposed to do, and Vance Welch has told all of his delivery people that if they park on Church Street, he won't accept a delivery. He has to know about it, but he, you know, has to figure out that they did that, but he has been going back and talking to his truck drivers and telling them that they have to pull in as required. The bigger problem is, which I think we all anticipated, is not just for this restaurant, but the large delivery trucks on Adams Street are large delivery trucks, and there needs to be a better plan for them. Currently, what's happening is that the delivery site in front of Novara is occupied by illegally parked cars almost all of the time. Enforcement has just not been occurring, and this is something Vance Welch has mentioned to me numerous times, I've gone to meet with the Town Administrator, I think he obviously has met with the Town Administrator, to discuss what to do about this. So next week, the Traffic Commission is going to have a meeting, I believe the Building Inspector's gonna go as well, he has some ideas. It's possible that the delivery zone will be moved, and we're gonna try some different things, but these delivery trucks are delivering to all of the eating establishments in the area, not just to this restaurant, the big ones, and they need to, you know, the, the solution needs to be addressed with the Police Department and the Traffic Commission and the Selectmen. So we are continuing to look at it and to try to monitor it.
My experiences.
That Traffic Commission meeting is 10:00 AM on Monday, July 18th, at the Milton Police Headquarters in the basement room. That's, that is an item that's on the agenda.
I mean, this kind, this does come up in many neighborhoods, in many towns, and in Boston and so forth, and it is in the way it's managed, because many places can't accept the size of truck that I, that you see in those photographs, and I do think it, it is something that has to be worked out with the vendors, the suppliers, that they can't bring that size of truck in, because it's not allowed in many places. There's also stipulations of when deliveries can be done in very limited, very strict time periods, and that would help with parking situations, I would think, as well. So, Tim, do you attend the Traffic Commission meetings by chance?
I do.
All right, so I do think from a Planning Board perspective on the East Milton, and all of our business districts, because they are small, and they are abutting residential districts, that it's important to make sure that we can advocate and help provide the best practices if there are, you know, from other places, because otherwise, we're going to, I think, limit what can happen in our, in our commercial districts because of the impacts, the potential negative impacts. So I, if there are ways in which to have businesses work together in terms of coordination of delivery schedules, I think that would be beneficial. I also have seen where trash pickup at restaurants is done daily because of concern about it odors, rodents, et cetera. So, I mean, if you're doing four days a week, I mean, you could monitor whether you need to increase that too at times.
Of course.
Certain times of the year, I suppose.
Anything else?
No, my final comment is just, we are not asking to increase the capacity of the restaurant. This is not a request to increase the impact on the neighborhood in terms of the number of diners or anything else. We don't, we do have an entertainment license, by the way, similar to what the other restaurants have, but there hasn't been entertainment, and there hasn't been entertainment out on the patio, and, you know, there's music in the restaurant, there, there are, there's a TV, you know, but it's silent, and then there are TVs over the bar. If there is a noise intrusion, we need to hear about it, and the neighbors would be the ones who would be aware of that, and we hope they will let us know if there is a problem. But there are, there in each of the licenses and permits, there's language that allows that to be mitigated if there's a problem, as long as we know about it, we'll address it.
Okay, any further questions for the applicant?
The valet, can you respond to the valet? Comment that it would move to Church Street?
I'd like to let, you want to address that answer?
Well, we suspended the valet, so it's, we're not even using one at this point in time, the business doesn't warrant it, and it seemed to, it just didn't seem to be effective enough to continue it, so.
So the parking lot is first come, first served, then?
Yep.
There are various issues with valet parking, this is what we anticipated when we were discussing the site plan review. The reason the permits are written to encourage or allow valet parking, but with the proviso that the Traffic Commission and the Selectmen would be making the final determination, are exactly those problems, those problems are the reason for that flexibility, because sometimes valet parking can cause more problems than it solves, because it means the movement of cars in certain ways, the valet management needs to be careful. But I think the issue right now is that the business is moderated since the opening time, when it was very busy, and there just isn't a need for valet parking right now. However, the way the permits are written, if there's a problem and it looks as if valet parking would address it, or the restaurant decides that the volume is greater and would justify it, they might go back to using it. They're not supposed to do valet parking on Church, at the Church Street parking lot, according to the permit, as it's currently written, it's supposed to be in front, there's a valet. As it's currently written, it's supposed to be in front. There's a valet parking space in front. But, you know, there were other issues with the valet parking, too. You know, just people didn't like having, the idea that they felt they had to use the valet parking was a real problem. Some people just didn't want to do that. And they were being charged something in order to sustain the valet parking. So there are lots of details that have to be worked out to make valet parking work well. And the overall or underlying question is, is it necessary and does it help? So that's what they'll be continuing to look at.
How long has that been suspended now, valet?
About, about three weeks.
And there's been no complaints about parking in the neighborhood?
No, we don't. We don't generally fill up our own parking lots.
There is another issue that you mentioned, one of the letters mentioned, which had been a problem or was complained of, which was where employees were parking. And Vance is, you know, instructing his employees to park in designated spaces. I don't know if you want to say anymore about that, but that's, again, a problem of making sure they're doing what they're supposed to. But they are supposed to be parking in certain areas and not along the side streets in front of people's houses.
We pay for their stickers. We'll do whatever we can to try to keep that under control. And if, if we know there's an employee that's parking where they're not supposed to, we'll correct it. But if we don't know, there's really not much we can do about it. So if something gets reported to us, we deal with it in all of these cases.
Alex, do you have anything?
No, no more questions.
Motion to close?
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion, Cheryl?
Where the capacity is not increasing, and where noise hasn't been an issue, I don't see an issue with moving the seating to the outside. However, I do want to make sure that if there are noise complaints, that there's a provision to make sure that they're taken care of, because doubling the capacity outside could potentially cause there to be more noise there. So Alex, is there a way to have some kind of provision to come-
You can say it, you can write it.
But is the-
I think that's really true.
Well, but I mean, I'm trying to think of a way to-
I can respond to it, because I have, I have an idea for it.
Okay, all right, great.
You know, so I look, I have, I share the same thought. It's, from a capacity standpoint, we're not generating any more people. So a lot of the concerns we're hearing about from a, you know, use standpoint, the people are there whether they're inside or they're outside. I do have concerns about noise, obviously. That's, that's what this all comes down to, so I share Cheryl's concern. So my thought was that we, we could, we could allow this modification on a six-month basis, and then come in for a review in December or January, whatever the six-month period is, before next summer. That gives any neighbors an opportunity to come in with noise complaints. We can make sure there's no, no issues. And at that point, at the review, we can make it a permanent modification, or we can decide to revise it in some way. I've, I've been subject to that in several special permits in my, in my professional capacity.
This is a site plan approval, there is one.
Yeah, I understand, so.
Which is different.
So can we still not have it come back? And I understand, but can we not have it come back and reviewed it that way?
A conditional site, I've been-
If you can say it, you can write it, Alex.
We can, we can do it, whether or not it's, I, I don't mind that. It does seem to me that we should, we should, in the site plan approval, have a few conditions, and a review is not bad. And, you know, if Marion feels like she wants to go see how the Superior Court works in, in July, fine. Mr. Flynn, you know, it's just thrilled to do that sort of thing.
Well, I'm not suggesting we write something that's not, not allowed, but-
No, I, I think a conditional site plan approval, let's see how it works this, this season.
Right.
Let's make sure that we don't have a congregating area for people to get a drink at the bar and go out and-
Congregate.
And congregate.
Right.
And-
I'd also prefer, and maybe this is, maybe this, I'd prefer that the entertainment not be on the patio, at least not after a certain hour, perhaps 7:00 or 8:00 p.m. or something along those lines, but, and they can move it inside all they want. I'm not sure if that's, if that's addressed, if the entertainment can just be anywhere as it's currently written.
It's not addressed right. It's not addressed in the entertainment license, but I'd suggest that if you want to put such a condition on your site plan approval, I don't see why it would be inappropriate, if that's, if you feel that that's a good idea.
Okay.
I also, I do think it's important in terms of, like, the intent of that drawing, and then seeing the photograph of the tables that span the inside and the outside, that's not, they're not in sync. And so for me to say that I would say that the capacity in the outdoor and the 44 seats, I would expect that it wouldn't be creeped, additional creep like those photographs show.
Indoor is indoor, outdoors is outdoor.
Exactly.
Right, I agree with that. That's part, that's part of the six-month review, frankly.
Yes, yes.
That's part of the six-month.
Yeah. And personally, I think, you know, good faith demonstration of addressing the big trucks and other, you know, issues that have, have been brought up, I think, would be helpful, too, because I can appreciate the concerns of the neighbors.
Absolutely. We have control over the small trucks.
Yeah.
The large trucks have to deliver on Adams Street, and right now it's not working well for anybody. And so I would say that we all share that responsibility, all of the eating establishments.
But you don't have to receive from large trucks.
I'm sorry?
You do not have, the town actually doesn't, there are places where they don't allow the 18-wheelers to come in and make deliveries, so.
It was, I don't know how that works, but it's a great, I mean, it certainly sounds like a good suggestion, if it's possible, to, to-
So maybe the Traffic Commission can take that up.
Or eliminate those deliveries. But they're still going to happen because other establishments, unless the town decides it can't take any.
Well, I was just suggesting, Tim, to bring it up at the Traffic Commission, because there, there can be limitations put on the size of vehicle that can come into those districts. And it's not for your business alone, but I'm just suggesting it can be a way to address the, the neighbors' concerns overall for the whole area.
Even liquor, liquor trucks, liquor deliveries and other smaller trucks?
Yeah.
That's interesting.
I think we'll have the building inspectors. The tent structure will-
I have a funny feeling that will resolve itself. I expect that will be resolved, now that the attention has been called to it.
We will do whatever we are required to do. That's the best I can tell you, because I don't have an answer there.
And we think that if we do approve this, Marion could send us a draft of what she thinks.
That would be nice to have someone written. Yeah, that would be great. So I would entertain a motion to, hold on.
Subject to all the conditions that we've-
Yes, I would, I would entertain a motion to, let's see, make an amendment to the site plan modification.
To approve an amendment to the site plan approval.
Okay. With the following conditions.
To allow, to allow the patio to have up to 40 seats.
Additional 40, an additional 40.
With a total capacity patio restaurant of more than 160.
Wait, how many patio seats?
Forty.
Forty-four is what we asked for.
They asked for 44. Are you doing 40 or 44?
Forty-four.
Forty-four is okay.
Okay.
And then subject to the conditions that we have-
Subject to no non-diners, no entertainment on patio, and the planning board will review this-
No creep of interior.
Modification in six months.
Right.
Can I add the creep?
And the goodwill enforcement, et cetera.
Correct. Do you have all that, Ms. McCutcheon?
You've got it all down, don't you?
I think so. I know-
If not, it's televised in the court.
Well, at the end of my letter, I had suggested, of course, there are additional conditions, which I expected would come up in the meeting, but I suggested a revised wording for what is currently Section E, Number Four. So I believe that's the way we would do this. I do have a question, though. It's, you know, the site plan approval is a recorded decision.
Mm-hmm.
So do we record the entire decision over again?
We won't record it until we-
I know you have to review it, but-
Until after the review.
But that is what you do. So you want the whole site plan decision with revised wording for that section?
No, 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 no. This, this is going to be a site plan amendment to site plan approval.
So it'll be a separate document?
And then you'll just say, "So-and-so is amended to read."
Right.
And, and we won't record it until after the review.
Sure, yeah. Okay, I will do that and send it to you.
Okay, so just to rephrase my motion now that I see your language.
Or does it say you've got to record it before it becomes effective? If it says if the-
It says it has to be recorded in the, in the requirements for site plan approval, but I'd have to go back and look at the wording to see whether it's-
Or just make sure that recording doesn't, isn't essential to affect it.
Well, if it is, I just ask you to do it-
If it is, you can record it.
With dispatch. I just ask you to review it with dispatch, please. That would be very nice. Yes?
So now, I'm going to modify the, the motion now that I have your language in front of me. So I would make a motion that we amend Section Four, we, excuse me, amend the site plan approval decision issued on February 12th, 2015, so as to say in Section E, Decision Number Four, seating capacity shall not exceed 160. Of those 160 seats, 44 may be exterior seats on the patio as shown on the seating plan submitted for this application, as long as fewer indoor seats are occupied in proportion to the number of patio seats in use, and total seats occupied does not exceed 160. And then we will add that-
Subject to the following conditions.
Subject to the following conditions, the planning board shall review this amendment after six months.
As one of the conditions.
As one of the conditions. Second condition will be that there will be no use of the patio for patrons that are not dining on the patio. And Condition Three will be that there will be no entertainment on the patio.
And Condition Four, that-
I think Condition Four is covered, but, but certainly, Condition Four is that the tables that are outside, that, that there may be no tables that are inside and outside tables, essentially.
All structures have to be approved by the building.
Well, that's, that's, that's the tent.
Well, I understand that, but, and, I mean, we should approve the tent.
So, well, let's make note of that. So Condition Four was that all structures shall be approved by the building department, and as the planning board, as the building department deems necessary.
But it is, I mean, this, this tent is really something that we-
My guess is that the building department will send that back to us.
What about the fire pit, then?
And the fire pit is something, maybe we should approve the fire pit.
I'm not, I don't want to approve the tents unless the building department sends it back to us.
Well, I understand. Okay, you can, we can, subject to temporary structures approved by the building department, small, small temporary structures.
The, the site plan approval amendment that you're doing is tied to the plan that's submitted, which does include the fire pit. I don't know if that helps you with that issue. I don't know that, the only approvals required for fire pit are from the fire department and the, and the gas inspector, but it is on the site plan, so.
I think we're going to have to get a fire pit approved.
If you want.
That would be an extra, that would be extraordinary.
Well, it's on there, so I just wondered if we-
I think it's fine that if we're approving it on here, that's fine.
Okay, fine.
Subject to building department review.
But the structure, the tent structures are not on there.
We still have appropriate language on the, on the tent structure, because this is a pretty, if you look at this, you can see it's got lights, and it's, it's not, it's not a-
An umbrella.
It's not an umbrella.
Is it light? Yeah. Okay, so there are some questions anyway with the tent, and so honestly, although they've been very, people like them, and it's, it creates a nice ambience, but we have to deal with whatever regulations apply to these structures, and I can't give you the answer to that. If you want to include that language, I can write it up both ways, with and without.
I know, you do it.
That sounds great.
Okay, okay.
And we'll speak to Joe Prondak in the meantime.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So, so moved.
All in favor?
Oh, well, let me just, uh-
Oh, sorry. Any discussion, I'm sorry about that.
A quick discussion. You know, this is something that if the neighborhood didn't want it, it's sort of, this is a bit like the stone wall. I mean, if the neighborhood really didn't want it, there are ways to make it known to the planning board. But the neighbors have to do that if they don't want it, and the fact that they haven't done it, a few neighbors have, but there hasn't been a general outpouring of neighborhood opposition, and lack of opposition may not be overt support, but it certainly influences me in approving the application.
And just further that statement, the, most of the opposition we heard tonight was with regard to capacity of the total number and the impact that that capacity is having on East Milton Square, and that capacity really isn't changing based on this use.
Well, I think what we've heard was enforcement of conditions, and I think-
We're hearing that a lot.
And we're hearing that a lot, Ms. Wright. And so I think people are saying that before granting additional requests, that they want to be sure that the, the things that were already made requirements are being adhered to. So that's where, where we have, I think, six months to review it, or after the end of the season. I think it, it does give a little bit of recourse, I guess, if you will, for those who are concerned about the impacts that may come. So having that makes me much more comfortable in supporting it.
Could we have that language at least the week before the next meeting? I'd like to just run it by council before we sign it.
I'll do it within the next day or two.
Or we can revise it.
And we may revise it as well.
We may revise it. I mean, getting, getting a draft from council is, is, gives us a working document.
Gives us a working document. Okay. All right.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Three, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marion, could you just flag down April?
And it's almost 11 o'clock, yeah.
We're enforcing-
Capacity, noise, do we call the police?
Fire department would be capacity.
What about noise?
Noise is inspectional services or police. You can call the police.
Okay, just to check.
All right. That takes care of our public hearings. It is approaching 11 o'clock. I think we're going to probably move most of this, most of our other items to a subsequent hearing. Sorry to make April stay, just to hear that.
How nice, napping, huh?
Good. Is there, so we have three things we really need to talk about. Process for technical review of applications and amendments to planning board rules and regulations. Tim, we should probably, what's on the agenda for the 28th?
Town Farm, Cluster, Public Hearing, 245 Highland Street, Cluster, Public Hearing, and the Continued Kinsale Lane, Public Hearing.
Okay, so it's a busy night. We also want to talk about the condo working group. I think we can probably punt on that. And we have to discuss at some point here the inclusionary zoning calculation for determining contribution to Affordable Housing Trust for subdivisions that deal with lots. We have one coming before us at our next meeting, so.
Got two.
We have, is Pulte Lots?
It's Cluster, so it's lots, yeah.
Yeah, but I think it has a unit. They have, they have units, I believe.
Highland Street and the Town Farm.
Right, okay. That's Pulte was delivering.
I mean, Pulte has signaled their intention to build houses.
Right, they have to deliver actual units, so.
Pulte is going to fix two units at the Town Farm as Affordable Housing.
They're proposing that, yes.
That, that's actually-
The other one is thinking, thinking of a contribution.
Correct. So I think the question on, is really, the uni- So I think the question on, is really, the units are pretty self-explanatory based on the numbers. It's when we get into the contribution and the lots, and how do we determine what that contribution is, I think we need some guidance on that, and the board needs to discuss it. So, we don't have to do it tonight, but we will need to do it in the context of that Highland Street subdivision at the very least.
One of, one of the other things that I distributed in your packets tonight was my technical review of the Town Farm application. So there's a memo, there is a zoning matrix checklist for section 6J, which is the cluster, and there is a subdivision rules and regulations checklist.
I just don't see that I get most of this information you distribute.
So Pulte is Wentworth Farms.
Pulte is not Wentworth Farms.
What is Wentworth Farms?
Wentworth, does that say Wentworth Farms on it?
That is...
It does, that's why I got confused.
No, it's something else.
Ford Ranch, Frog.
Oh, this is Ford Ranch, okay.
Right.
Was that in what I gave you tonight?
I think so. No, probably not.
You brought too many things.
I did, I do.
I'm glad you keep all that stuff.
I'm not, it's confusing. All right, so, do you have anything you want to mention on the technical review while you've got us here?
I, I mean, I think it's, you can read the memo, and if anyone has any questions about the memo, it's...
Yeah, I see what I've got.
And that's, that's gone out to the applicant, so they'll hopefully be prepared to address some of those issues. I don't think there's anything earth-shattering in there, but that's up to you guys to judge. That's also gone out for a third-party stormwater review, so hopefully that will be, will be done in time for the 28th, although I anticipate that'll go more than one public hearing, so it's not...
I just, I got that memo, like this. Okay.
Can I ask just a question about these memo, the matrix, the highlighted ones?
So on the, on the subdivision matrix, the highlighted ones are regulations that I felt were best addressed by the town engineer, so that was just the means. He has that worksheet, and so I asked him to specifically address those.
You're gonna hire a peer review on this one?
Well, so, for, for stormwater, yes, it is out for peer review, but there's a lot of stuff about the radii and tangents of roads that is just not, it's just not my wheelhouse. So that's stuff that he would generally, the town engineer generally looks at those things, but I specifically wanted to flag them because those, those are things that I was very specifically not going to address in my review. So he's gonna take a look at those and provide a response to those requirements.
Thank you.
Okay, so you have that in your packet. You also have this payment move Affordable Housing calculation that Tim has prepared that we will be discussed, we can be prepared to discuss next time, but it's, it's Tim's sort of first shot. I know we've discussed it briefly before, but let's, again, just be prepared to have that discussion.
Will they be making a presentation?
I have two, I bet I got yours.
Will they be making a presentation?
The applicant.
Which applicant?
I was thinking Town Farm.
Oh, yes.
I mean, but at the next meeting...
Town Farm is, is doing it different, though. I mean, Town Farm is actually producing units.
Correct.
So...
That's, the calculation is, it's a different ballgame.
And to say to them, "Why don't you pay some money rather than produce units?"
No, we don't want that.
That's different.
But it isn't different because it's the cluster, and it seems to me that if, it's different. I mean, it's the same bylaw, but they're going to produce units, and what they're doing, and what they're doing at Wentworth Farms, and on Highland Street, they're suggesting a contribution, and the contribution on Highland Street, once again, the zoning says it's within the discretion of the planning board, and the Wentworth Farms would be a modification granted by the planning board within its discretion. So there are three different approaches, and I don't think that one size actually does fit all.
I agree with you on that. So just to, yeah, to further the distinction, I mean, the Highland Farms is gonna have under 10 units, so that's a contribution to Alex's point. That's, we have to figure out how we're gonna determine that at our discretion. Wentworth Farms is at our discretion because it's a waiver modification. And I think, I think Wentworth, I think the Town Farm site is almost the simplest of them because it's just a unit count.
I would like to suggest that we take up the inclusionary zoning discussion that we started last summer, because I think it's gonna be much easier for everybody, including this board, to have a policy that we can follow that is across the board. I did a lot of looking at what other towns were doing last summer, and I was researching it, and there's a lot of towns, there's, the state has a model bylaw, and a lot of towns have taken it up, and even on the lots, I did a quick look today back at what I looked at, and was it Shrewsbury, Tim, that I sent to you? Had an example of where they did, it was a lot, it was a six-lot subdivision, and they got a contribution of $233,300. Pretty significant. And I think, you know, if we could find out if other towns have wrestled with this, then, I don't know if we can, hopefully we could do something before the, we make a decision on these two or three applications, but I would like to advocate for advancing an inclusionary zoning policy that gets into the bylaw.
I think we have to implement policy. I don't know that we, or at least a system upon which we guide ourselves. We're not gonna have a bylaw, certainly in time to evaluate the...
No, but we can have a set of...
I think we should have a set of guidelines for ourselves to follow.
Guidelines, right.
So I, I agree with you. I think that's...
I mean, I expressed concern at another meeting where we were looking at lots of waivers on subdivisions, and I feel as if that, when we're looking at waivers, when we're looking at discretion, it makes the planning board, you know, susceptible to being looked at as if, you know, one site might get preferable treatment than another. And I just think it's better, you know, that people who come into us have, understand what our expectations are before they come in.
I agree.
I just think it's a better setup for neighbors, for applicants, for the planning board, for the town overall.
I agree.
I think, I have to disagree. I think that in order to be a nimble board, we need to be able to exercise our discretion wisely without imposing, self-imposing constraints, which may not work in a particular situation. I mean, the zoning says, "Consider all the circumstances and make a reasoned decision." And you can't consider all the circumstances if you've done something and created a formula in advance. So I, I think that the planning board, in order to be nimble, which I think is important, needs to be able to exercise its discretion in unusual circumstances, and consider them for what they're worth, and make a good decision, and not try and do something in advance of a decision that easily might not work, or easily might totally derail an application and...
Well, that's what zoning sets out the guidelines, and my view that the inclusionary zoning piece of this should set out some guidelines as well.
Yeah, and I actually, I agree with Alex to a, to a point, in that there's always the exception, so you have, we have the ability through the zoning to use our discretion. What I would like is a basis upon which to have the initial amount set, so that we can then decide if we, what, what, we're basi, right now, we're just shooting in the dark. We're just coming up with a number.
I feel that way, too. Exactly what you said, which I think is a hybrid of your two perspectives. I mean, I, I think we need a starting off point, because frankly, today, every, I mean, we're going nowhere fast, you know? I mean, we're just not chipping away at this issue about getting to 10% on the state's affordable housing inventory, and, so that means every neighborhood is vulnerable, every single one. And until we start finding paths forward to either create new affordable units ourselves, or through the Affordable Housing Trust, or work on friendly 40Bs, or so, create units through some of these development, we're just not, we're not doing anything to address the issue, which just makes us all more vulnerable. And I feel like if we don't have something on the table for people to at least try to attain, we're leaving it so open-ended, and every single project is gonna come before us saying they can't pay anything. They're gonna start at zero, as opposed to starting at some other number, and then we decide whether or not that makes sense. I just think they need something to aim for, and if they want to make it as easy as possible, they'll say, "Okay, we'll pay that number." If they want to prolong the process, they can try to negotiate down from that. And that's up to us to exercise our discretion, but we have to start somewhere.
So this discussion is going to be very relevant next week, or at the next meeting, and probably the meeting after that as well, and perhaps beyond that. We have something from Tim. Cheryl, if you could send around something through Tim, that would be helpful, maybe the first draft of what you had done, and then if you have those examples, if you have something for us to look at that would further our conversation, that might be helpful, that you referenced. So, if you have something, great. If you don't, that's fine as well, that you referenced.
Right, just let me, let me, let me say, a few months ago, the, the planning board had asked the Affordable Housing Trust to make a recommendation about what, what a formula might look like, and, and what they, what they came up with was that a contribution should be the difference between the average assessed value of a single-family home in Milton minus the maximum affordable price as set by DHCD. And then, the, this sort of sheet that we're looking at here, with just a couple lines of math, is sort of how that would apply to the cluster which deals with lots, and so I, I asked the tax assessor to figure out what the assessed land value was of the average assessed value of, of a single-family home. So that's what these figures come up with. And then the second sheet is, is a calculator that was produced by a colleague of mine to determine, based on all the requirements the DHCD has about sales prices of affordable homes, kind of how you would figure out that max affordable price. So this is, this is how their recommendation would sort of manifest itself. There are other ways of doing it. It sort of models the Commonwealth Model Bylaw. They sort of recommend median sales price as sort of the base figure. The, the trust decided that average assessed value is the way to go. Other towns, Shrewsbury, does the average of the past three years of median sales price. So there's, there's different ways of doing it. You know, this is the trust recommendation. I mean, if, if, if you're gonna get deeper in the weeds on this, I might recommend a joint meeting, bringing them to the table to sort of hash out the different issues that, that might come up.
We need to know what other towns do, because, just because are affordable. I personally think that this figure is far too high and is, would basically kill the cluster bylaw in its tracks. It certainly would kill the Wentworth Farms proposal, it would kill the Highland Street proposal. Since Pulte isn't using it, it wouldn't kill Pulte, but it's, it's just, it's, it's too much. And I would like to see what other towns do. And Shrewsbury, I would like to find out, have they ever used it?
They have.
Have they ever gotten paid?
Yeah.
They have, yeah.
I, I have...
Other, what other towns are doing, I would like the lawyers, Ned, representing Highland Street, Marion, representing Wentworth Farm, to weigh in on what the considerations should be before we bring the Affordable Housing Trust in. Or maybe bring everyone in at once and spend two or three hours discussing that, if this is what we want to do.
So I, I would object to asking people with projects before us or coming before us what their opinion is. I feel like they're gonna say, "What's in the best interest of their clients?" That's what I would do.
If I just say, "We've looked at it, and this is what..."
That's the point.
But I guess, I mean, so, my question is, how do we know that $188,000 payment is gonna kill, how many units are proposed at Highland? Eight units?
Go on.
And those are gonna be...
Okay, Ms. Corcoran, Ms. Corcoran, this is an internal discussion, so...
Very, very high-end...
I understand, but I don't, we're...
Construction, I'm imagining.
Running a public hearing in two weeks on this, I'm not starting the public hearing if, if, if I'm left to wonder.
That's fine, you can listen, but we're gonna keep the discussion at the board level tonight.
But I mean, I think it's just...
I understand that.
That's fine.
So maybe there's been a discussion that I haven't been privy to, but I just think to assume that this development is gonna be killed from a $188,000 payment, I'm not comfortable assuming that. I don't know that's the case. I mean, Highland Street's a pretty high-end neighborhood. If they're gonna sell eight lots and build new homes there, I would think they would be able to afford a $188,000 payment.
So these are the kind of conversations we obviously have to have, because we need, we need direction, because otherwise we're gonna be stuck in the mud at the application period with no guidance, no...
Oh, I agree, I agree. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna think about a policy in the context of a single project either. I was just using that as an example of responding to an...
But I do think it calls into question, you know, okay, what's the intent of the cluster bylaw, which hasn't been, I don't think any projects have gone through under that provision? The intent, you know, of preserving open space, you know, and how does the 10% affordability, you know, what was the intent about that being applied to the cluster, and is that the best way to look at it? I mean, one of the things I think that, you know, if, when we were working on the condominium working group, we were talking about, you know, that there could be a series of things, or a list of things that might come, and that not every project would, would pick, or would have to comply with every one of those benefits. So, it might be significant, open space was a benefit of one project where affordable housing, where on another project, there wasn't that benefit, but there was an affordable housing piece that came out of it. And that's where sort of, when we're looking at, you know, different scale projects, you're probably looking at different scale of contribution. So, if you're looking at something where you're barely triggering a compliance for the affordable, then that calculation's a lot different on impact on the development team than it is if you're at the higher end of it.
That's where discretion comes in.
Except that, you know, you, there are, there definitely will need to be discretion. I don't disagree at all, but I do think that it doesn't make sense to have a set of requirements if you know that the mark, that the market can't support those requirements.
I agree with that.
And, you know, but we don't, we're not at that point of knowing, I think, is April's point, is that we don't know for sure. You know, we have a suggestion here, and we do need to do some further due diligence about what other towns are doing and what they've found, and I think Tim has placed some calls in the past, and I'm hoping Tim can place a few more calls to his, to colleagues in other towns to see what their experiences have been. This is something that the state's been looking at. I mean, it's a statewide issue, and if you Google it online, you'll find all kinds of people who've been working on this for a very long time. So the information, I think, is there. It's a matter of sifting through it and see how it might apply here.
I, I have, when, when Wentworth Farms was sort of informally before us, and this is what sort of triggered the discussion with the Affordable Housing Trust, I have a worksheet that's, that models a few other towns' policies that are different. Quincy does something completely different. Like I said, the model bylaw does something different. Let me take a look at that and see if that's up to SNF for distribution to see, because it would sort of apply, using that project, what we know of that project that's kind of like a base. It applied different, different models to that.
Have you talked to MIPC?
I was actually just at an MIPC inclusion zoning workshop.
So they must have some examples?
Not more than a week and a half ago. Yes, and actually, I, I did talk to, I talked to a few people. That, that particular workshop was a lot of, a lot of folks from Cambridge and Somerville and Chelsea, which have different issues than ours, but there's, there's no shortage of towns that have good policies and bad policies, and policies that work and policies that don't work. So, I'm confident that we can find some, some, some models that, that would fit.
Okay, to the extent that you can distribute as much of it as you can prior to the next meeting is helpful, because this is...
But you are gonna bear in mind that we're talking about the sale of lots, not houses, where most inclusionary zoning deals with dwellings.
Right, and, and that was the issue, I mean, Brian brought this up, you know, the last time, we talked about this, that, you know, there's, there's no such thing as an affordable lot, and so to, to require a lot to be restricted is basically creating an economically unbuildable lot.
No, I think that it simply is that the Affordable Housing Trust then has a lot to fill the house on.
They don't have any money when they can fill the house with.
Well, I see that, yes, but...
Well, I mean, if developers want to donate a lot to the Affordable Housing Trust, we can probably, they can't do that.
They can't do that. They wouldn't do that. They, they would restrict the lot so that it could only contain affordable dwelling, and then the developer would have to figure out what to do with the lot. But I don't think we can require that it be given to the town.
But my concern there is you just start getting unbuildable lots all over the town, and you...
Well, that's what you, that's, that's what you get.
That's what you would get. You'd just end up with tree-filled lots in the middle of a neighborhood that would look bizarre.
Get a big, big space.
Oh, space.
Not well-used, not well-laid out.
I hope we agree.
Please, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.